Okay, good evening, everyone. It's one o'clock, so I'd like to begin our committee of the whole for today. Thank you. Okay, so as the agenda sets out, it is a special meeting until we change our procedural bylaw. So we're going, I'm calling this to order as a special council meeting. And then we'll, we will resolve into committee of the whole. So welcome, everybody. I do wish to begin by formally recognizing that we are having this meeting on the territories of the South Nation. And I'll just confirm with our staff, I didn't hear the recording start. So is the webcast rolling? It is. Thank you very much for confirming. So council, starting off, we'll look for approval of today's agenda for February 21st. That's moved by councillors Betto's and seconded by councillor McMath. All those in favor, please. That's unanimous. Thank you. Next up would be a motion to resolve into committee of the whole. And that would be that council resolve into the committee of the whole to consider the RCMP staffing request, the Fire Master Plan Staffing Recommendations, and Sue 2030 Climate Action Plan next steps. Moved by councillor Bateman, seconded by councillor Pearson. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. And just going forward on the committee of the whole, now that we're sitting of the committee of the whole, I'm going to conduct the meeting slightly different, that you'll see. Reminder that only one mover is required, no seconder within the committee of the whole. All discussion items or all outcomes will forward automatically to council to be resolved. And when I say differently, it would be more usually in a regular council meeting, we get a staff report. We then look to have those answered, and then we have a mover, seconder, and then we debate that particular item. When we're sitting at a committee of the whole, we can do more of a roundtable discussion, i.e. any reactions to the report, what is the Q and A, build in public input, and then commence with deliberations and decisions. So it's meant, I want the meetings to look slightly different. Otherwise, we might as well always have a regular council. But this is meant to be more, which is why we have just a few items, more open to discussion and deliberations, and not just finalizing discussions or decision points that are made. Okay, but we, as always, keep your points. We don't want to be here till 11:00 at night. So it's always best to remain focused on the items at hand. So first off, in our reports section would be 5.1, which is the RCMP staffing request. So I'll turn this over to our deputy CIO, who will open it up and introduce our speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. And thank you to council and members of the public that are here today to attend this very important meeting. This is basically considered the 2023 budget kickoff, one of the first meetings where we will be looking at service level reviews and gauging councils' support for any increases or changes to the service levels in these three areas. As councils aware, the first piece of our budget engagement cycle is always a citizen budget survey that we did with the community. So we reached out last summer with the community, got the results of that survey that have been circulated recently to council and posted publicly on our website. And will be on an upcoming agenda to officially get it on an agenda. And the results of that survey indicated that three priority areas for the community would be roads, parks and environmental services, and community safety. Those are three areas that the community felt were important to them and wanted the district to consider addressing the needs for a growing community in these areas. So because community safety and climate are potentially costly and are very important initiatives for the community, we started with these three items first, just to provide a status update on what the needs or the future needs of these departments are. Confirm if council supportive of that, and then those pieces will be ingrained into the budget process going forward. And further information will be provided as we meet into March to finalize the budget. On that, I will turn it over. The first presentation will be from Staff Sergeant Shaw, who will present on the RCMP staffing request. And he has a PowerPoint he'll walk you through, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions we can once he's finished.
Thank you. That's great. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, members of the public, staff. Just, I'm going to deviate a tiny bit to start, just with a quick announcement about the commander position. I know it's outside the scope here, but I think it's important to include the new commander, the Sue detachment has been announced. The Staff Sergeant Greg Wilcox, he's currently the Sergeant Commander in the Queen Charlotte Islands. If all goes to plan, he'll join us, we're hoping by mid-May at the rank of Staff Sergeant and assume commander of the Sue detachment. Conversation today speaks heavily into the era that he will take us through. But I do want Mayor and council to know that I have had conversation with him right away. He's seen this report, the requests, understands the trajectory that we're going to recommend. And being the interim leader over here, I also did engage with Staff Sergeant Sinin as well, who was the past commander. And again, this certainly has his blessing. So all three of us.
Remind.
I can turn it off. All three are consistent in this recommendation and request, so. Just a quick thank you to staff for their assistance in preparing this report. Again, this is sort of new to me navigating through this. So happy to take any questions when appropriate. Please feel free to interrupt if it's, if it is appropriate. Generally, the picture, the picture I will paint, I have painted in the report, the picture I hope to paint today is that subjectively, the Sukar CMP are busy. We are busier than is what is good for this community. And we are busier than what is good for our employees. That is my subjective opinion. But recognizing that very few people are interested in my opinion, I sought for some objective evidence to support that or refute it. And what I found, generally speaking, is by every metric, I am right. We are busy, and we are increasingly busy, and we are busy compared to others. And I'll walk you through what that looks like and what that means, both for our community and for our employees as well. Just generally speaking, information you likely know, Sukar CMP is a hybrid detachment. It's comprised of municipal employees and provincial employees. The funding's broken down, the District of Sook funds 14 police officers, the province of British Columbia funds four. I won't wade too much unless you'd like to into the provincial side of this, but I think it's important to acknowledge that the recommendations we make here today are recommendations that we have been aggressive with the province as well. And the numbers you see that are out of balance with the comparators are actually worse. And we recognize that on the provincial side. So we're doing everything we can through provincial processes to balance that, as well as with the District of Sook. Also, not news to you, the emergence above a population of 15,000, put your cost sharing, cost sharing formulas to a 90-10 split. That's on the money side, not my specialty. What that does mean increasingly, any municipal, municipality above 5,000 bears the lion's share of investigative responsibilities. And particularly with a 90-10, virtually every, every community issue, every crime, every investigation is the responsibility of the Sukar CMP, save for homicides, but that's for a different meaning. The breakdown of municipal to provincial is that the municipality or the District of Sook funds 78% of our establishment. The province funds 22. The good news with that is those numbers are virtually in line. They're off by a percent with where the workload falls in the provincial and municipal area. So that's something that we look at very closely, and something that we ensure is balanced. Briefly, as you know, comprised of a Staff Sergeant Detachment Commander, a Sergeant responsible for operations and service delivery, which is my substantive position, two watch commanders or supervisors at the rank of corporal, and the balance of members make up entirely frontline investigators. We have no specialized sections, which is something we'll speak on a little bit later. But those frontline investigators and frontline supervisors, and me, quite frankly, are engaged largely in just responding to calls from the community. We're setting, we're setting about a new fiscal year for us, starting April 1. We'll come back to Mayor and Council for some priority consultations in a month or two. However, just a quick reminder of what our priorities are. The top three are shared priorities between the Sukar CMP and the District of Sook, enhancing road safety, reducing crime, and maintaining a presence and meaning, building meaningful relationships in our communities with, with virtually everybody. So I spoke about my interest in objectively quantifying this for you. And what I did to do that was select a sampling of places, cities, municipalities in our area that people may, you know, use to select where they're going to live, where they're going to work, where are they going to spend their family time, that sort of stuff. You'll see later on, we also include Langford in this comparison. However, if I add them to the population, it makes everything really wonky. And the other comparisons are sort of relative to their size and crime, et cetera, et cetera. But here, this is just population averages. So just to sort of show you that we actually did a pretty good job in selecting these and that they, the population of Sook falls basically the average of these comparators that we're going to use moving forward. So the BC government publishes crime statistics, police statistics every year. So by and large, this is sourced from that Ministry of Public Safety and Solicitor General Report, which was linked in the agenda for the year 2021, which is a relatively new report in the last few months. And what we see here, we can go through it in depth, as in depth as you'd like, but what we see here is that crime rate, so that's measured in criminal code offenses per 1,000 population. With those comparers, with comparators, which now includes Langford because it's per 1,000, you'll see Sook falling at the very top. And you'll see them significantly above what we've used as our comparator average. Sometimes a provincial average is helpful. In this case, provincial averages are skewed by some really high crime areas. We're, we're sitting at 54.1 criminal code offenses per thousand population. Some remote locations are in the 500 and 600. So the provincial average is really skewed in this. And it's hard to, hard to be relevant. So we've given a comparator average. That report also details overall policing costs for each jurisdiction represented here and across the province. Other than North Sanich, Sook is the second lowest policing cost in the immediate area of regions with comparable population size. The report also does a good job actually breaking down pleasing costs per capita. Again, consistent with the last metric, Sook falls at the second lowest cost per capita for policing, based on the comparators here. As appointed.
Yes, we can. Just direct them to me, please. Yeah. Go ahead.
Sydney and North Sanich have a combined police force, do they not? So how does that impact that?
Do, so they, much like your hybrid detachment with the province, Sydney and North Sanich are hybrid municipal detachments that choose to join their resources. And so later on, you'll see when it comes more to internal impacts, you'll see I've merged them together. But from a cost being independent municipalities, I've separated their costs.
And similar with the West Shore.
Similar with the West Shore, yeah. They're comprised, they're more complex, but similar concept. Each of those also have a provincial component as well. But when you start bringing in the provincial components, it's challenging to sort of keep a consistent comparison and metric, so. This report does discuss, if there are questions now, I can sort of muddle through finding it in these things. Also, again, they're linked in that report on the agenda, so if there are questions, they're largely answerable in that report as well. Just not reflected in this, but just to make sure I was being fair and accurate. There's other comparing municipal police departments like Victoria or Central Sanich, ones that don't contract. The RCMP is sometimes not a fair metric as well. We include Central Sanich in this just as a, as one, and they're similar size. But costs per capita in Victoria are 570, Oak Bay 276, and Sanich at 293. So nobody, everybody well above what the average Sook citizen is paying for policing. There's lots of metrics to, sorry. To compare now, the, some people don't like this, some people do. What I would suggest to you is that, looking at the numbers and the crime rate per capita, is that the crime, Sook's crime rate per capita is relatively static. As the population has increased, so has crime per population. It really is an unremarkable trend, other than being consistent with population growth. So a population to police ratio seems reasonable in this situation. And what we see again is Sook well above our both comparator average, and even more so above the provincial average, by a significant margin. And you'll see later on that to, I say significant margin, because to get us down to that takes a lot when you start doing the division on it. These numbers, in fairness, if you, if you go home and pore over these numbers, the 1195, sometimes that's reflected as 1107. They use population projections in this report, so I tried to keep it consistent with the report, but it does overestimate the Sook population by approximately 500, based on census data. And the fine print of this report explains that it is based on estimates. I've tried to keep it as consistent with the report as possible. You may see some deviation in, in these numbers on the, on the report that's included with the agenda, but they're only off by three or four. Just a general comment on crime rates that we've seen. This is a information in that policing report again that goes back to 2012. For the purpose of this conversation, the specifics of them, I don't consider all that important, other than just to show that all but property crime, all offenses along all measurables are trending up within the District of Sook. You know, there's a particularly sharp increase in violent offenses since 2012. Based on the time and resources it takes, I would, I would say to you that mental health calls are drastically up, though the way it comes out in this chart, it doesn't actually appear that way. The takeaway here is just a general increase in crime, which is expected as the population grows and as we grow as a community. From an inward-looking perspective, and I'll, I'll tell you in a little bit why this matters, or why I believe it matters. Criminal code offenses investigated per officer. So when we look internally, one of our priorities this, this year, and will be next year as well, is the wellness of our employees. Sook RCMP members carry a significantly above-average criminal caseload per officer. That is my subjective belief, and that is reflected aggressively in the statistics available. Overall, calls for service, so criminal code offenses, criminal code per officer investigations that are scored or are assessed as criminal investigations. That doesn't include your neighbor disputes, your mental health calls, check wellbeing files, suicidal persons, things like that, aren't reflected in criminal code per officer. So then we look at just total file count per officer, just to measure, absent the criminal investigations, what's the work that our, our police officers are doing in the community? And again, you know, relatively balanced with criminal code per officers, you see, and this is councillor Bateman, where I amalgamated departments to just better reflect as a group what we're doing. And again, far above the average for the Sook police officer. As I was working on this, I was driving around and taking some files and responding to some community issues, and I, and I just, I was struck by, sorry, I changed my slide, but I didn't change yours. The development, current development in Sook, and I'm not a development expert, I'm not a planning expert, but your planning expert very kindly did share with me what these developments are, are set for. And what it shook out to was 454 total dwellings in development right now. That's the Waddams Development, Charters and Drennan, as well as Otter Point. Averaging the household size, average household size of Sook from Stats Canada, 2.4%. I'm not a mathematician, so if I'm off by a tenth here, please forgive me. Showed me that right now, nearing completion or nearing beginning of building, depending on which it is, we're set to increase our population at an estimated 1,090 people. That population increase is well above the comparator average, is well above the population average. It equates to, if using our comparator average of one per, one police officer per 912 people, that equals 1.2 police officers right now with what's approved or in the, in the process of being built. By provincial average, it's 1.43 police officers for what it's worth. And why this matters, importantly, is our ability to provide the service that we're contracted to provide. It's, it's challenging for anybody, particularly for a police officer to stand up and say, we're not doing a good job. But what I will tell council is that we're not doing as good a job as we should be doing, and is what this community expects us to do. We hear that all the time. And we acknowledge it, and it weighs heavily on us. Those priorities that we set together, a lot of that has to do with proactive enforcement and engagement by us. And what I mean by proactive enforcement is targeting enforcement product, projects, targeted enforcement projects. There's recent media, we did two successive investigations back to back on a Sook resident resulting in significant seizures of guns and dangerous weapons. Both those investigations were near two different schools. And that is a prime example of the reality, honestly, of what exists in our community. And it keeps me up at night not being able to effectively address that as quickly, as safely as I want to for this community. Along those lines, reducing crime, targeting prolific offenders that repeatedly victimize people and businesses, properties in our community, proactive traffic enforcement, and the pursuit of increasing road safety, foot patrols downtown to prevent crime, to engage with business owners, people out for walks, all those things that pay dividends down the road that we simply aren't equipped to do right now. From a community engagement side, post-COVID is particularly glaring to me that we need to be in the schools, speaking with the parents, speaking with the students, joining a basketball game on the playground, like those are things, again, that are going to pay dividends. It's well sort of established that community engagement is an area to invest in as far as the police community goes. Different community events, participation, different community groups, we do as much as we can. But it's always on the cutting edge, or on the edge of being cut, and quite often, we're not able to be there. Quality investigations, we have responsibility to always put our best foot forward to, to have our people be as skilled, as proficient as possible, to conduct meaningful investigations, and we can control that to a degree. However, the volume, as you saw, the volume criminal case per officer, files per officer, the volume you see is beginning to affect the quality of what we're able to do, because it really is on to the next. And we hear that feedback from our partners at the Crown, we hear that feedback from, well, they hear that feedback from me. It is real, it is a real issue. Complex, serious investigations are exclusively the responsibility of the Sukar CMP. Stabbings, serious sexual offenses, serious child offenses, those offenses are increasingly complex, time-consuming, and challenging. They're increasingly specialized. And they are best served by a team of dedicated investigators who retain the knowledge that comes with each investigation versus being investigated by those frontline investigators who are, who are victim to the next call that's coming in, who don't do this all the time. And again, we do our best. This isn't all doom and gloom. We do have systems in place to seek efficiencies and checks and balances. We're doing what we can do responsibly. But those types of investigations are another that really do suffer, given the workload that we're facing. Internally, and I say this acknowledging that we're living in a time where police accountability is at the forefront of our communities and conversations, and rightly so. It's exactly where it should be and where it should always have been. We understand, we are learning and understanding a bit more about our history with communities, with indigenous populations, with visible minority groups. So I say this acknowledging that we have work to do the other direction, but the impacts internally are significant. Employee wellness across all emergency services in fairness, but particularly policing stands out. The impacts of low staffing or, or being understaffed, not present not only a community issue, but they also present an officer safety issue. Because generally speaking, we are, we are the emergency service that is targeted, that is, faces violence, aggression, things like that. And as we compound that, more things on the same amount of people, and as we spread ourselves thin in order to provide as broad and as effective service as we can, we find ourselves alone or with only one other person. We're the same call you see routinely, you see. You see people flagged in our systems, you know, minimum four-member response, and they're Sook folks that we respond to on our own all the time, but other departments won't do it. They'll take four people at minimum to do it. And that weighs on, on the men and women that are providing this service. We really are doing it on their backs right now. And if, if, knock on wood, they don't work to rule one day, or I'm going to have a pretty significant problem. On call, so we run an on-call schedule, I should have touched on that at the beginning, and it's well documented, though. So that interference with people's sleep, time off, not only time off, but time off when the rest of the world is sleeping, has a cumulative impact. And then, of course, I won't belabor the issue, but the higher-than-average workload, significantly higher-than-average workload, begins to wear on people after a time. On the strategic side of things, recruitment and retention is challenging to have people want to work here. Again, the on-call affects people's desire to come and work here. The rotation we run right now is a, is a five-on, four-off rotation. So compared to a typical 24-hour rotation, which is four-on, four-off, so it's one more day of work and the same amount of days off. It's one more time away from their fam, one more day away from their family, same amount of time off. And the opportunities for career advancements, we have a highly motivated group of people working for us, but there is no opportunity for advancement within the Sukar CMP. And so what you see is people that love this community, that love our policing family. They're looking to move on sooner than we'd like them to, because they want to grow, they want to challenge themselves, they want to. So while I, while I prefer to focus on the community impacts, I just do want to acknowledge the internal impacts as well. And a bit of a tip of the hat to, to the men and women there that are, that are working tirelessly for the community right now. We've shared at quarterly updates that we've been down three, we've been running three vacancies, basically for all of 2022. Those numbers, by the way, don't factor into what you're seeing in here. That's not, that's our problem, not, not our partner's problems. And we need to manage those. But for the last 30 days, we've been down two additional people due to injury. So we're now at five of 18, which only compounds the things we've talked about here before. Like I say, we are looking for efficiencies, and I wish I'd sort of put that in there officially. We partner with regularly with different groups to advocate for Sook, to advocate for the service we provide out here to, to get as much sort of external support as we can where appropriate. An example of that is I sit on an island health committee with the police and island health in an interest in decreasing or finding efficiencies in wait times for mental health calls at the hospital, which consume a lot of our time. Some of those issues are just geography. We're the farthest away from the Royal Jubilee Hospital, which is where we normally go. There's nothing we can do about that. But having more people would take the pressure off of that, but also working for efficiencies with island health would do that. We work with Crown to find investigative efficiencies, set reasonable achievable standards for our reports to Crown, things like that. We are doing everything we can with what we have right now. Not to highlight problems without solutions. This is the recommendation from me. Um, it's supported by our incoming commander as well as our most previous commander. I recognize it's an aggressive ask. And it's not, I'm not super sophisticated in politics or in negotiations, so it's not aim high and hope for something down below. This is what we need right now. We have a right now problem. We are staring down the barrel of a pretty soon-to-be crisis. My recommendation is to add two police officers in twenty twenty-four. That will begin to balance the ratios. The small print there shows that with projected population growth, that would put us at a ratio of one to one thousand and twenty-seven, still significantly above averages, but trending in the right direction. The other benefit of that would be that would allow us to begin our transition to twenty-four hour policing. And I say begin our transition because um, with a commitment of two in twenty twenty-four and two in twenty twenty-five, we would start as soon as those bodies were in place, we would switch to a twenty-four hour policing model. The magic number to do that is twenty-two. We will do it with twenty. We have a plan to make it work with twenty. But we can't sustain it with twenty. It it's a stopgap on our way there. It's to get us twenty-four hour policing as soon as possible. But it requires knowing that we would be at twenty-two total members by the end of it. Which is why in twenty twenty-five, the recommendation is to add two additional police officers, which would complete the transitions twenty-four hour policing. That would be a traditional four-on, four-off schedule, five police officers um, on a team, four teams across the board. And it would leave my substantive position, commander position to manage service delivery and the administration side of things. Right now, um, those are being run literally off, even when the commander's here, it's off the side of the desk. We're on the road taking calls and doing responding to calls for service uh, virtually every day. That brings our ratio in twenty twenty-five, if population projections are to be trusted to one in nine thirty-nine, which is really in the wheelhouse of where I think this community needs to be. And then i- in in all honesty, twenty twenty-six had a two in front of it as well when I started down this road. Um, but realistically, when I did the numbers committing to one in twenty twenty-six uh, is i- is most reasonable in the interest of balance and the interest of service delivery, which brings us to a ratio of right in line with the comparator average in the CRD area. It also introduces an ability in twenty twenty-six to begin providing supplementary policing sections and specializations. And we would have to decide where that where that resource went, but um, a general investigation or major crime section would be certainly a priority, a community policing section. Uh, traffic enforcement or traffic safety section would all be options to consider at that point in time. I sort of touched on this. This is just the blue lines there if we are to not increase police resources and the population continues to increase is where where we would fall. And then the sort of teal color would begin in twenty twenty-four, same numbers, ten, ten twenty-seven, nine thirty-nine and nine sixteen. And the comparator average there i- is assuming that other jurisdictions in the area maintain their ratios. And those with ratios in line with that are, in my opinion, uh, quite reasonable. I know some communities aspire to a bit lower. Um, I think for the argument sake and Suk that nine hundred is is a reasonable uh, aspiration. Seven sixty-four, the provincial average is uh, I would call that pretty Cadillac service. Um, and those are community decisions. I I will, I'm not trying to talk you out of it, but um, I think nine hundred is a reasonable aspiration. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions or have any conversation.
Okay, thank you very much for being here with us and for all that information. Uh, so counsel, just go around the room for reactions and Q and A. Go ahead, Counselor Pearson.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Shaw, uh, not only for uh, the presentation, but all the good work that you do do in the community and and you get the sense that you're that you care about our community and and thank you for that. Um, so a couple of of technical questions, a lot of good graphs, a lot of good information. Is there a portion of this, and I think I asked this last time, because you service a large part of the Wanda Fuka electoral area. We're talking about Suk's population at fifteen thousand. Where is the additional population included for Wanda Fuka electoral area? And do we get any money from Wanda Fuka electoral or or do the police, are they funded?
Uh, thank you for the question, important question. So the Wanda Fuga, Wanda Fuka Electoral Area um, falls under what I described as a provincial policing area. So from uh, Isuk Shanu Nation to Port Ramfrup Pechita Nation.
Just out of Otter Point Road here, yeah.
Is all all the what I would call the provincial area. So they provide funding for four police officers. Our ask is to increase that to six police officers, which um, based on all these same metrics is um, is a reasonable ask as well. So I don't, I I'm not a funding expert. If I'm wrong, I'm sure I'll be corrected. Um, I don't believe the district of Suk receives any compensation for that. Um, but what we do, um, as I talked early in that presentation is monitor knowing that um, that seventy-seven percent of police resources are yours or seventy-eight, twenty-two percent or twenty-three percent uh, belong to the province or or funded by the province. The workload is balanced within one percent of those metrics, but we do monitor that every month and make sure that we don't see an imbalance. Um, we don't, we don't differentiate, you know, a a Suk-paid position can go beyond um, the the border. However, we do ensure that the workload is spread fairly and uh, based on what folks are paying for.
Second question I have is um, not directly to you, but to our finance department. And so if we see a a population growth, eminent population growth of about one thousand and ninety using your numbers, which you know, it's gonna be plus or minus that, given what else is going on in development. What's the revenue we would expect into the district as a result of moving eleven hundred more people here?
Um, to your worship, that's a complicated answer for today, probably. I can work on that for budget. Cause it would depend on the housing that gets added, if it's commercial, if it's if it's commercial, if it's residential. Um, the number of people doesn't necessarily increase the number of the amount of revenue coming into the district. So it would be dependent on what kind of properties and and um, I can bring that back further in March for some of the budget meetings, if you wanna deep dive into those uh, estimates, but I haven't calculated that at this time.
I it it's just, and I and I know that my question was not gonna get a specific answer. It's just that, you know, when we increase by, and it's gonna probably be closer to two thousand, I would think. Um, some of it's, you know, it's gonna be depend on the rule, the tax rule, et cetera, what we're gonna be getting in. And then we have a large percentage of rental population. I just don't know if there's any revenue, what what that revenue looks like in it in the in some of the housing that was described. And then hundred and forty-four dollars per capita is what we pay in taxes now, and this is through the through the chair back to our finances. What would that look like? With projected two, two more officers in twenty twenty-four. What would that, because that's the question we'll get asked. Okay, so if we're paying hundred and forty-four dollars per capita for policing now, what would it an additional two officers look like per capita? At fifteen thousand?
Um, to your worship, I can get back to you on that. I don't have
Sorry, sorry to give you all those kind of questions, but I think those are important questions for us to understand when it comes to budget deliberation. So it's hundred and forty-four and um, and I liked your graph that shows, you know, who's paying what. So I just kinda know what that would increase by person because it's sometimes easier to explain incremental increases to to the taxpayers if it says thirty dollars per person or something. Thank you. That's all my questions, actually.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Pearson. I'll go to Counselor Lajaness next, then Beddoes. Can you turn off your microphone? Thank you.
So last week, last Wednesday, there was uh, a new RCMP auxiliary program introd- announced. Um, and it's set to get underway later this year. And I know that that was a relatively recent announcement. I'm just wondering, I know you haven't had time to factor that in, but I'm just thinking with uh, some of the trips to to uh, Royal Jubilee and other sorts of things, if the auxiliary program could sort of not reduce the need, but certainly complement um, what you, what you're working with now.
Yeah, thank you. It's it's a really good point. And you're right, I don't uh, haven't had a chance to to investigate some of the nuance of this revamp program. We did, we did suspend the program quite a number of years ago uh, for a variety of reasons. And there is um, a red communication today. That's the first step in in reinvigorating the auxiliary program is to terminate the existing contracts and start anew. Um, but what the auxiliary program won't do um, is police work. Any job that's required to be done by a a fully trained uh, sworn police officer um, will remain. So the the numbers, the criminal codes per officer, the files investigated per officer, uh, that will uh, that won't change by that. Uh, to use your example, uh, escorting a prisoner to the earth, sorry, uh, prisoner, escorting prisoners, period, or escorting um, apprehended persons under the Mental Health Act uh, to the Royal Jubilee Hospital is a job that will need to be done by a police officer still. Um, responding to calls for service, no, no auxiliary officer will operate in an enforcement uh, capacity alone. Uh, they're unarmed and they're not trained to the level uh, that the community would expect in those circumstances. Um, they can deliver some supplementary uh, programs and services or assist with that sort of thing. But as far as as far as workload goes, it it won't have an effect on them.
Thanks.
Can you share a little bit what the previous auxiliary program was? Um, my understanding was that it was more to encourage young people. It was sort of like an in-between if you considered a a role in policing that you could train to be an auxiliary and see what that looked like. And then it would help uh, get some experience to actually enter into and and actually to uh, qualify, or it was a pathway into policing.
Thank you, worship. Certainly, it it was. I've not, I've not uh, had any experience with the auxiliary program in Suk specifically. Um, but I have uh, been a police officer through a number of sort of iterations of it. Um, yes, a component of it would be like a ride-along component to accompany a police officer on shift to assist them in whatever that might be. They could write the ticket, they could do the queries on the computer, uh, things like that, and has long been a really good opportunity uh, for folks interested in a career in policing to not only test it out, um, but if it is something they want to pursue uh, to get some experience and it about to set them apart from other applicants for sure.
Counselor Beddoes, I believe you had questions?
Yes, uh, through uh, the chair, uh, to our sergeant, uh, first of all, I want to thank you for that presentation. And more often, I like to thank you guys for the work you do. Uh, it can very evident in the last few years that the instances of violence that uh, you put yourselves in harm's way on our behalf numerous times. The um, I have some financial questions, but I think that that's bet best left to when staff uh, works the numbers once we get through this portion of it. But I have a a a concern about the the new builds on charters and Drennan uh, and lesser to the ones on uh, Waddam's wave. Do you see some extra uh, challenges, especially for the one on charters, when you worked into one point uh, two police officers for those new builds? Uh, do you see a higher rate of calls? Cause it's just the nature of the people that might be living in that charters or I don't know whether that's all ball or not, but I I'm concerned about it, uh, more not just the police officers, but for for other parts of our community. Um, does that skew the one point two number? I'm not putting you on the spot, I hope.
Your worship, Counselor Beddoes is putting me on the spot a little bit. It's important that that the police uh, provides service, uh, provide an unbiased service. It's also important for us to forecast needs and when uh, certain developments, certain community events. It's reasonable for us to sort of gauge its impact on our service delivery. Different demographics create different policing files. Some are more volumous, some are more con- time-consuming. It just simply depends on the nature of it. Um, what I think I can fairly answer is that high-density builds, like you would see in the charters and Drennan area, will create, and this is an opinion, I think they would create more police files based on the close proximity. So your noise complaints, um, reporting uh, overheard violence or overheard mental health. Um, with high density and close contact, we see increased conflict at times. As far as any community issues beyond that, uh, new developments are certainly on our radar and we will closely watch um, any trends developing in those areas if they are to develop.
Through the chair, Sergeant, thank you very much for that. I know I put you on the spot there, but I think your answer was what I was concerned about. So thank you very much. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Bateman?
Yes, uh, to you, to to uh, Staff Sergeant Shaw. Um, great news about the acting, your move back to Sydney, um, question.
I don't think he's moving back to Sydney.
Are you not? Oh, you're
Okay, good.
Thought you were moving back to major crime investigation, is that not? Okay. All good. So let's get to the point here. So thank you very much for your objective and subjective presentation. Um, very hard to find any fault with it and I can absolutely see supporting this move forward. I'm curious, you know, I look back to um, twenty twelve and Staff Sergeant Wright at the time noted that Suk compared to other municipalities is grossly underpoliced and that we heard that from um, Jeff MacArthur as well and and Mr. Senden and in Staff Sergeant Senden in this room. I'm curious, th- this kind of really clear, clean presentation has not been brought forward to councils before. Um, i- is this related to our our growth to fifteen thousand and the clear need now that that something has to change?
Well, for us, being eighty-six citizens over fifteen thousand didn't change a heck of a lot. I would agree with the assessment of Staff Sergeants Wright, MacArthur and Senden that we were grossly underpoliced, I think was the language. Um, no, the emergence above fifteen thousand, uh, had no impact on the urgency of this. No, the the presentation is uh, well, I appreciate the compliment. Um, it's just me learning how to use PowerPoint. I've learned a lot of things this year. That's one of them. Um, no, it's uh, again, I only speak to the last two years. Of course, I look back, these numbers go back to twenty twelve and it's all there in the data. Um, I I didn't know there was value in in building it in beyond sort of the last chunk in time and and present time, but but yes, I would agree with that assessment. Um, I've had the benefit in my career to work uh, in a lot of detachments when I was in major crime, which I'm not going back to. Uh, I worked in a lot of detachments around this district, which is Vancouver Island and Outer Gulf Islands. A- and again, subjectively, uh, there's no comparison. When I came to Suk, my my hair was on fire and I haven't stopped running since. Uh, and it's great work and it's a great community, but it is different than other places for sure.
Okay, um, thank you. You you noted, um, okay, so the the caseload, um, the the ratio, uh, population ratio, does does Suk have you say challenges both recruiting and retaining, given this level of um, workload? Yeah, so th- this will address that. That that's not a question, that's a statement. And I'm not supposed to do that at this point in the meeting.
We're committed the whole, Counselor Bateman, so it's meant to be a line full of time.
Yeah, ramble on, as Counselor Ash says. This piece, you know, cap- to to Counselor Lajaness's point about the auxiliary service, um, your your ask for twenty twenty-six, uh, might auxiliary service um, development fill that particular bill? You say the twenty twenty-six hire will allow you to uh, start this uh, more uh, proactive traffic enforcement, which a group like Speed Watch potentially could do and community policing and that sort of thing.
Your worship will certainly look for efficiencies um, as we reinvigorate the auxiliary program. Um, it's an important point, though, to 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 note, and and I think I said it before. Um, is that it, they won't replace police work. Um is that it they won't replace police work. And so so if I had to pick right now, if in twenty twenty-six, if all goes to plan here, in twenty twenty-six, we have a member a police officer that exists outside of our need to fill a twenty-four hour policing schedule. And it's up to me to allocate that based on um community issues, crime in soup, I would make that person right now. I would tell you, I'd make that person uh into a one-person general investigation section to deal with complex, serious crimes, child offenses, sexualized offenses, um and violent offenses. Uh the expectations of the courts and the community continue to increase in those areas. Case law and legislation continue to evolve. It is it is now, has been, and will continue to be a a complex and specialized area policing and one that we don't have other requisite skills to manage as effectively as we should be right now. I think that's where that would go. So an auxiliary wouldn't be a suitable um su- suitable fill there. We will use auxiliaries. I mean, so with the auxiliary program comes a lot of work. You need someone to administer it, which we don't have right now. So it's sort of the uh we're sort of stuck in a bit of a loop to get that off the ground, and it will be a priority because it will be beneficial to the community. Um but it's gonna be a challenge to get it going. It's not something that will happen overnight. And again, it will, it will supplement the community service we're able to do, but it won't replace the requirements for police officers.
Okay, um through through you to our chief um director of finance, not chief director. Um in in your uh budget financial impacts section of the agenda, thank you very much for all of that detail. So there's a lot of wizardry you can work with the budget. Could you, would you give a quick summary for those uh in the audience?
Sure, happy to do um to your worship. Uh so as far as the financing goes, as it's a very wordy section because there's a lot of moving pieces for the RCMP. There's timing delays on when we actually receive invoices. Um and then, of course, the big delay and finding about the retro piece and all of that. Um and these departments are are quite expensive. Before I deep dive into that, I have a quick answer for um Counselor Pearson. Um that will, the per capita cost, just a quick and dirty calc would add about thirty dollars um to the per capita cost. Again, I can confirm that with um Sergeant Shaw after and just confirm it, but just my quick math says that would ask add about thirty dollars to add to officers. Um and the growth projections, um what I should have mentioned would be we get non-market change revenue every year that for for new properties. So just for a quick example, um bear with me one second, um Counselor Bateman. For twenty twenty-two, uh we added a hundred and fifty properties in Suk, a hundred and forty-four residential um made up part of that number, and uh that brought in three hundred, three hundred nine thousand dollars of non-market change. So that would be a revenue source that comes in from these new properties. The the interim piece, of course, would be any building permit revenue, like one-time revenue that we would get from any of these um properties as they're being developed, and and that's a bit more complicated depending on what kind of development it is. And as well with these properties, again, if it's our commercial, they they're taxed at a higher rate than residential, it's our. Um so I just wanted to touch base back on that for a quick second. Um so as far as the revenue pieces, um so yeah, as I've stated um through multiple budget cycles now, there's many moving pieces to the RCMP department's budget. Um we have had some confirmation on a couple of pieces, like the contract was settled. So now we know what an officer costs and we're incorporating those you know, two hundred, three thousand dollar costs into our uh budgets going forward. Um so a a couple pieces, I guess, maybe where one easier spot to start would be traffic fine revenue. We get um two seconds here, we receive um on average, just over eighty-five thousand dollars a year in traffic fine revenue. Twenty twenty-one was ninety thousand, twenty twenty-two is a little bit lower at eighty-two thousand. Um so that would be the first part of the ask is no matter what resolution council supports today for future staffing is to um direct staff to change this bylaw so that we can dedicate that funding, which is really from the RCMP, they're the ones who create these funds for us, um to be used for future staffing, you know, costs uh for RCMP. There will always be cost pressures for the RCMP. So um it would be nice if this revenue source will be available in a reserve fund that staff can use a- as we play the budget dance every year. Um so that that is a fairly straightforward asset. I would um request the council support regardless of how they support additional staffing. Um and on top of this, so then I guess a couple, maybe I'll start about the retro pay. Um the the current bylaw has in there that any uh savings realized from the police operational budget get transferred into this reserve fund. Um and so what the staff have been doing diligently every year is making accruals for estimated uh retro pay that we'll be receiving or be billed for potentially, once that RCMP contract settled. Um we have yet to receive a bill for it. The contract is settled quite a while ago and um we're hoping to get an update by March because that is when year ends happen and and so a final determination, that's normally when we've gotten a letter from the RCB headquarters saying accrue this much for retro or and any other um cost pressures. And so staff are anticipating um getting confirmation one way or the other on if we're going to actually be charged for this cost because of of quite a few calls um that I've been on, many other municipalities have been on these calls has indicated this is a, you know, for for soup, we've we've accrued four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that account to pay for this. And I my understanding is maybe not all munis have done this, so there's been a lot of pressure on the RCMP and and the federal level to um find some funding sources to pay these retro classes because of the ridiculously long length of time, they went without a contract and and to adequately save for that. So that would be one um one significant piece that if uh we get confirmation this year that we do not need to accrue for that anymore, those funds by virtue of this bylaw as is, will then move into this reserve fund that we can start accessing. Um again, every year through the budget cycle, we find the right, you know, the magic sweet spot to we don't want to drain the fun necessarily every year. So we find kind of the happy medium balance that will mitigate the property tax increases from this this um any staffing increases or any cost increases to that department. And then um a- as well as then use that fund, but then, you know, play play the dance every year, make sure there's still funds available to to play this um to have fun the scenario in future years. Um so that would be one potential input into um this fund. A- another um anomaly this year was um as Sergeant Shaw stated, we changed to fifteen thousand population with the last census, which meant we were start, we were supposed to be starting to be invoiced at ninety percent. We budgeted for that starting in April. Um and we've heard again, similar to the retro pay, that this has been, there's a few munis that have, you know, just barely went over fifteen thousand. And so they have, again, been putting pressure on the province to delay implementation of charging us for that for one more year. So it started April of twenty twenty-three versus April of twenty twenty-two. So again, with March and year ends happening with the federal and provincial levels, I'm um hoping for confirmation that we won't be, like, my last RCMP bill is still billing us at seventy percent. So um that that would be another factor there that will result in a up, I don't want to, it's not audited numbers yet, but just over, just around two hundred thousand dollars of surplus revenue in the RCMP budget for twenty twenty-two. So by virtue of this bylaw, those funds will go in the reserve fund and can be accessed. Again, if this staffing is supported by um council, then that will just be used as one of the funding sources for to offset the cost of this in the twenty twenty-four budget. Um maybe briefly touch on the timing of it. Um so the timing uh of why the ask for for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six is because with the RCMP, it takes almost, you know, Kevin maybe doesn't fully agree with this, but for me to actually start getting billed for these officers, it takes almost a year for a bum to be in seat and for the district to actually start being charged for that. So um you know, just because budgets and everything are tight, that the, if this is supported by council, then this would start to be included in the twenty twenty-four budget. The twenty twenty-four budget already currently has, like in the current financial plan, has a new officer in twenty twenty-four and one new officer in twenty twenty-six included in the budget. Um so we would just be adding an additional officer uh in that year. Um just again, it's just due to the timing of not leaving too much, it's, you know, it's it's the game, not leaving too much money in that fund um that is property tax funded um and not hitting everyone at once. Um you know, in a perfect world, we'd be fully funding all of these staff members, but a- as Sergeant Shaw indicated, there's always vacancy ingrained. And and you know, we have vacancies right now. Every every organization has vacancies, it's just the way that business happens. I think the reason, part of the reason for the ask of this staffing is because it's a lot different to fill a permanent full-time position than a temporary vacancy because somebody's off on injury leave or a mat leave or some other leave. Um so at least if their base is up to, you know, a a higher level of full-time permanent positions, when they do have those average three vacancies a year, they still have more officers available in your community um to provide the services that he needs. Uh you know, that the community um needs. So I I guess I'm not sure exactly what else you want to be to highlight on Council Bateman, but i- i- it's kind of just highlighting, there's many moving pieces to the fight, to the RCMP budget. Um a- and so historically, again, we've had this reserve fund and and councils of the day were planning to you know, for this increase. And so for sure, the short-term ask is to about the traffic fine revenue, that should just be going indefinitely would be staff's recommendation. And um just kind of highlighting how I wrapped up the report is if these staffing asks are supported by council based on all of the moving pieces that we know with the RCMP budget. Um in in, you know, one of those years, the worst case scenario would be potentially like a two percent profit tax increase because a hundred thousand dollars is approximately one percent tax increase right now. And based on twenty twenty-one numbers, that was twelve dollars and fifty cents a year. So worst case scenario, this could be a twenty-five dollar a year if this had to be funded with property taxes. Um you know, we can provide more details with twenty twenty-three budget presentations in March. If if this is a staffing thing that is supported by council, we can deep dive into that a bit more. Um but because this is such an expensive thing, that was why it's just getting this in front of councils, is something you guys support? And if so, we will engrain this in the budget and and get the the balls moving and presented to council and the community with more details. I don't know if you needed more than that.
No, that that is excellent. Thank you for the insights into the alchemy of your department and that that bottom line of a one to two percent uh tax increase for the next three years uh at a range of twelve fifty to twenty-five dollars per portfolio. Okay, thank you. And I'll just ask one final question, and that relates back to the mental health matter that Counselor Betos wrote uh raised. Um I I guess I'm curious, from your perspective, I know we're we're at the dawn of a mental health crisis or in the thick of it, according to Gabor Maté and others. And I guess um in every household in Suk is potential for mental health issues to arise. And that must um y- you need to be ready for any number of calls regardless of this geographical location.
Maybe more of a statement unless uh, yes, any feedback, though?
It's, I I mean, the point, thank you. The point is, the point is well taken, and I think it's, I think it's fair and I think it's accurate. Um we certainly watch uh as community members, as um as service providers, w- we watch with a keen interest the trajectory um that the current mental health crisis is on. Um it's so broad, it's it it doesn't affect any any one subset of people right now, it seems. And so, yeah, uh we're alive to it. I I do have numbers for a different purpose of the amount of mental health calls that result in apprehensions by the police. Uh the police are not uh the agency best suited to help you with your wellness. Um not by training and not by design. Uh so when we engage in mental health files, that is an absolute crisis. Um and I share that with partners all the time, like the plan cannot be to call the police, uh not to uh shirk responsibility, but if if we're coming, that's we've we've run out of options. Um but that still happens far more frequently than I would like it to happen. Um not because of its impacts on us, just because of the reflective uh issues in our community. That's more of a statement than an answer, but.
Now, that's fine. Um just a few final comments or questions that I have. Uh there has been tremendous advocacy on behalf of all local governments across Canada to RCMP impacted communities about some federal decisions that have been made on things like body warden cameras, the software and the maintenance of the safekeeping of the files, DNA testing, the unionization and the like, that were all federal decisions that uh the federal government feels local government should absorb. And then local governments are pushing back to say, well, you've made those decisions, so you absorb the costs of such. And uh and also the pieces around unionization and the like. So there was a final push last December that um and the ask was that the federal government absorb these costs. Um but I haven't seen any outcome to that advocacy ask, and maybe it's bundled in the federal budget. Or are either of you aware of any any outcomes yet to that advocacy work?
Sorry, worship, I don't have, I don't have clarification on that. Uh your point is well received, and it's certainly a topic of conversation um with the RCMP leadership and and I don't speak on their behalf, but would certainly suggest they understand the implications on communities, uh small and and big alike. Um what we can, i- if I might just expand on that, what we can manage, um we do our very best with with municipal funding to manage as responsibly as as possible. Um no, not as possible, to manage responsibly, period. Um and to a point um that Miss Gray made, uh when we run, and and just for clarification, I'm not sure if we know, as we, I've heard actually, the last time I was with you, and I heard again, the concept of backfilling positions and a challenge to backfill, that's actually not an option for us. So when we run a vacancy, that vacancy is vacant until it's filled permanently. And when we run what we call soft vacancies, so employees off with uh, you know, an an injury, those soft vacancies cannot be filled until that person either returns to work and fills it or is retired or discharged from the RCMP. So we have um run since February, I'll use this as an example of a vacancy, a person was injured on training. So on police officer training, they're injured on duty, they've not been at work for a year. Um they move on to a medical cost center and the cost is not downloaded to the district of Suk in this case. So so that police officer for the duration of years is not being paid for out of the district's budget. So we don't backfill positions. So while we can't control some of those things that that challenge municipal government um like body worn cameras and, you know, it just seems everywhere I look, it's the costs are are compounding. Um when it comes to those extras that are sort of beyond our control, but just to assure mayor and council, those that are in our control, we are diligent in managing efficiently.
Okay, thank you very much. And then the other piece here is um I'm aware that uh there's been a disturbing trend, not just in soup, but elsewhere in B C, that we're now at six people dying daily from opioid poisoning. When I was first elected as mayor, it was just under one person per day, and so that's a tremendous impact. Uh and then, of course, there's the recent decision to decriminalize um certain amount of um substances of which there's different arguments. Uh but obviously, just given the work that you're doing and what is laid out before us, is taking all of this into mind. Uh you know, sadly, I guess for you, it's it's another day of policing that you're encountering these terrible substances that are poisoning our residents, but um it's not, it's all sort of a factor of business as normal, I guess. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's an important point, and thank you for raising it. Yeah, I always say, if I were to answer that in agreement with business as usual, it might be time for me to move on. Um it it impacts us. Um you know, it's a community uh issue and it's crises for so many among us. Um it impacts our people as well, seeing seeing it. You know, it's it it's not six people a day in Suk, um but it's certainly more frequent than anybody wants. And we really do value the partnerships we have um with other agencies within Suk to try and address the issue. It's not particularly a policing issue um so much as a health or housing issue, but we recognize we're an important partner and not um and we need to be consistent in um in engaging and supporting where we can and responding as quickly as we can um to those types of events. Often, we're the first ones there because we're out and about. Um I give you a firsthand example of seeing someone um and reviving them uh after overdose, just they wouldn't have been called in, they would have been unequivocally deceased. And a- again, not to tie it back to my own agenda, but um you know, the more of us out there, uh the quicker we are to respond and to help. We all carry Narcan for that exact purpose. Yeah, it's the drug trends are are a bit skewed, and I didn't include them in the crime trends graph because with the decriminalization of marijuana, not necessarily other illicit drugs, but the decriminal marijuana showed a very steep downtrend in drug enforcement um across the province, not unique to us. Um so there's lots of reasons for that. I I wouldn't speculate on any effect that decrim of other illicit drugs will have on us. I think I think the impacts on policing will remain, and I think uh the importance of us being meaningfully engaged in that community issue isn't isn't going away anytime soon.
But I think that does speak to the um pieces around the foot patrols, the school liaison, the community events, the awareness pieces. Uh access to resources that that folks may need and want to do when, how to educate your children, and the presence in the schools. Those are all preventative steps that'll hopefully um help our ratios here over time. As a parent, it's just terrifying to think about what's out there and readily available.
It's a topical conversation right now, for sure. Um I I just had a conversation with um our member that delivers uh drug resist, drug resistance I I just had a conversation with um, our member that delivers uh drug assist, drug resistance training, Dare, the Dare program to uh elementary students. You know, I I I don't want to editorialize on the evolution of society, but we're we're embarking on an era where where open air drug use is permissible, um, where illicit drug possession is permissible. For lots of good reasons, and there's lots of counterpoints to those good reasons. It's not uncommon for us to get property files, which you don't see in all those sort of numbers I've given you, but property files. And we had one last week where a bag of hypodermic needles was found in a park. And that was brought to us, or we were asked to to help address that. Drug paraphernalia on the streets or people consuming drugs in, like, it's still generating work for us. Our responsibility is to be as informed as possible and to have a collaborative mindset um, to sort of help. But, you know, the overarching problem isn't ours to fix, but the follow from it will continue to land at our feet at this point. I wish it didn't. I wish, I wish there were a better solution.
Yeah, no, thank you very much on behalf of all of us uh to the work that you and the detachment are doing within our community. It's certainly valued and appreciated. Um, at this point, I would like to ask if any members of the public would like to ask any questions or make a comment on this particular item. It would be on the policing. There'll be public input after every item, so I just want to focus on policing. And what you've heard so far.
Ellen Lourdes, thank you. That was the most comprehensive report, I think, ever made. And thank you. That was very good. I've listened to a lot of these reports, and I remember one time um, one of the officers reported that when there was a mental health call, they would have to take they'd take two officers and they'd have to take the the patient to Jubilee Hospital and wait until he was assessed, if they were assessed. And uh, lose the two officers for possibly the whole shift. There's a lot of issues I know around the mental health and uh, thank you for bringing that up, Council Bateman. And uh, you had talked about mental health and suicide and violent crime. Do you feel that those are all all should be under the same same graph? Or are they?
Uh, thank you for your question. It's important clarification. Um, so in the statistics that I that I sourced for this presentation, criminal code offenses, so violent crime would fall under criminal code offenses are differentiated. So those are the measurables that the policing, municipal policing reports uh collect. What they don't collect is um the umbrella the umbrella we use is in mental health calls for service. Whether that is a a person who is suicidal, is attempting suicide, or is just contemplating self harm or harm uh creating jeopardizing community safety, there's a, there's quite a spectrum. Those in the way the numbers are reported are separated, being no overlap. Oftentimes in violent crime, there is an overlap with mental health. They would get collected into a crime statistic category. Absent criminality, they would be collected under mental health related police response.
I I guess the reason I was asking that is because um, we should know where to put our resources as as far as officers and you, and I heard you, you answered one of the questions that the officers aren't trade trained to deal with mental health issues and you come into things that are not, you're you're not trained for.
We're trained to a degree uh in an understanding of mental health crises, in crisis intervention and de-escalation. But we would never profess to be mental health professionals. I won't solve you with your long term, uh, I won't solve, I I won't be able to help you solve your long term problems. When when we're engaged, it's an immediate right now problem, and that's where we are well trained.
So so a question I have is because I I know then Langford, they um, like, if there's a call in the and they're possible mental health, they do send somebody that's qualified with mental health with the officer?
So just to Sook contributes to a regionalized unit, the Emergency Mental Health or Mental Health Crisis Response Team, IMSA is what it's often called. Um, and that is an integrated unit with between police and health professionals um, and a very effective unit and a very valued partner that we utilize uh as often as we're able. Both Langford, I understand, and I won't speak on behalf of Langford, my understanding is that Langford is embarking on their own um amalgamated unit. Specifically to to address those type of issues and to provide a mental health professional in the company of a police officer to better deal uh with folks in our community, their community in crisis, yes.
Yeah, I I would suggest that we would be looking at uh different models to help police officers because it's, because you're dealing with multiple situations that possibly it, one, one officer can't deal with. And as you were saying, some of the officers, some of the calls should be four, four officers, officers, and quite often there's one. And that's really putting the officers in danger. And and I think that's more discussion has to happen around that. That's, that's not right. I know there's a cost incurred with this, of course, but we have to decide where our resource is going to go and how to have them. And with mental health, and I've advocated for this before, that we need to have mental health and addiction centers closer. We should have them in Sook. Uh, places where officers could possibly bring somebody for attention for for health and perhaps um looking at ambulance service as well. Maybe um updating our ambulance attendance with with uh more skills or perhaps a mental health officer there. But I think we have to look at some other, we have to be more creative in how we manage what we're doing, because it's policing is not what it was at one time. And so I think we have to look at managing this in a different way. Right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lures. Are there comments from members of the public? Okay, um, just on that, no, Ms. Lures, I know that uh, Council Bateman with his work with the Sook Coalition uh is doing a lot of work as well through the Family Court Youth and Justice Services uh, which is region wide, and then through our own Sook Health Working Group uh is also looking to improve access and health and it always seems that local government is sort of more progressive. It's just getting the other levels of government to also be as responsive. So we're waiting on some outcomes, which hopefully will bring us some more services that we could have used yesterday. Anyway, I won't pick on them anymore. We'll just turn back to our agenda here, as we'll never get out of here if I do. Okay, any other comments or questions from members of council at this time? So there is um some recommendations within today's budget here. In today's agenda, I should say. So there's two under five point ones. The first one is that the committee of the whole recommends council direct staff to approve the inclusion of two new officers in the twenty twenty four budget. Two new officers in twenty five and one in the twenty six budget of the twenty twenty three to twenty seven five year financial plan. And the second part, um, I'm going to put them all out is that the committee of the whole recommends council direct staff to bring forward to council an amended future police cost reserve bylaw, number six five three. That includes an update to section four A that requires traffic fine revenue to be deposited into the reserve fund with no expiry date. So those can be moved together or we can sever them separately. Uh, and just note that committee of the whole recommendations move to council, which we could endorse tonight. But the intent would be that those then all form part of our bullet budget deliberations. And it's just just to speak to that further, it doesn't mean that right away after today, these are imprinted in the budget. It just means that our staff is then going to be tasked out with doing the relevant number crunching to bring it forward. We don't support it today, then they'll drop it and move on to other pieces. Do you underst- do you see? So move by Council Bateman, we don't require a second or, Council Bateman, would you care to motivate?
The subjective and objective arguments today were were expert and appreciated, and I look forward to seeing the budget as an entirety so that we can get the proper understanding of implications. Thank you.
Other comments on the motion that's in front of us? No, no, it like, what is that? It's either a yes or a no. It's not a
I'll just say, yeah, no, I think it's important, but we stay on top of things rather than fall behind and have a massive tax increase down the road. So let's just get it done.
Okay, other thoughts? Okay, the other piece I'll add is that um, it also is not, like, to your point, I agree with you, Council LaGenas is also to be able to actively recruit. We want to see, be seen as a desirable place where people want to work in policing or planning or in development or in the hospitality sector and the like. Because they know that coming to work in Sook means that um, there's balance and uh their family has opportunities and they have time to enjoy with their family as well. It's it's the whole piece of that altogether. Okay, seeing that there's no more movement, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please. That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation today. And we will see you again sometime soon. All the best to you. Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to move on to five point two, which is recommendations from our soup fire and rescue. And there has been a request for a break, so we will recess for seven minutes. So if we synchronize, it's currently, I can't read my clock. Two twenty, two twenty seven, please. Okay, everyone, we're back on the hour. If I could ask council to stop talking and members of the public, please take your seat. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We need to keep going. Thank you. Over to chief, please. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship and council. Great to be here this afternoon. Um, I hope you've had some time to look at my uh written report as it has a lot of information in it, but the hope today is to get this presentation to sort of align with that report and paint a bit better of a picture. Uh, before we start, um, I'd just like to touch on, so I arrived here in November of twenty one. And at that point in time, the Fire Master Plan had just started. Uh, as I started to settle in, we worked with that consultant and and we saw the end of that plan. So that plan is ready to be implemented, and that stemmed some of this report today. I would imagine you're going to see some similarities between uh what Staff Sergeant Shaw presented and what I'm going to be presenting. We have similar challenges, although it's a different service, so. Here we go. Okay, so we'll touch on a few of those things today. So our current team, the membership and structure, response and service levels, what twenty four, seven day a week coverage will look like, staffing in general, how we will get there and what the cost will be. Okay, so we'll just back up a second before I get too deep into it, and I just want to go over some terminology. So our department currently in Sook is what we call a composite department. So what that really means is, is we have a bit of a mix of career as well as paid on call staff. There's some advantages to this model, particularly to the fact that it's, it's probably the most sustainable model going. And what that really means is, is from a cost And what that really means is is from a cost point of view, we're paying career firefighters. But we're also paying paid on call firefighters at a lesser rate, so it's not as expensive as a model. You know, I think some of the challenges we face as we rely on our paid on call team. Are the fact that it's not really a guaranteed response. Those folks have lives, so they have other commitments. So when the bell goes, we don't always know if they're coming or not. So that's a bit of a challenge. The other piece of that puzzle is the retention and the recruitment, which seems to be something that's really difficult in these times. Obviously, lots of issues to sort of look at when we think about recruitment and retention. And we look at their commitment to their family, their other career, their household, what that looks like for them. So it's really a tough model to have a lot of success with. However, it's been very beneficial to suit to this point. So when we look at our current team, you can see that we've got a lot of moving pieces here. And as I said earlier, some of them are career pieces and some of them are paid on call pieces. So this is the makeup of the service we provide to the community. As you are aware, we're in a transition is what I like to look at it as. There's a definite growth pattern going on here. Our community is growing drastically, call volumes are up. And we're dealing with all sorts of things, mental health crisis, opioids, climate change, everything sort of comes back. To being a part of something that we do and we provide as a service. Okay, this particular slide here speaks to what the impacts are on our service today. As you can see, there's numerous things that have an impact on what we do and and how we get there and how we fund things. What's regulated, what's legislated, all those pieces in that puzzle, so to speak, play a part in how we move forward. There's legislative impacts, there's obviously growth and development. We're taking on a bunch of new mid-rise buildings that present challenges from a firefighting point of view. We have a career staff that's comprised of a union, they have concerns and we negotiate and bargain with them as as we move forward. Response times are quite important and obviously we had a consultant do a Fire Master Plan. To show us as a district what the best way to move forward is. So when we look at what's going on in Suk, we can see that there is quite a bit of new development happening. Low rise, mid-rise, single families, duplexes, townhouses, row houses, all sorts of different construction. Construction nowadays is quite a bit different than it was a number of years ago. And that's really got a lot to do with building materials. Building materials now are very flammable. Highly flammable and they produce a lot of different toxins nowadays. So that's a significant risk for us if you think about response times and flame spread. So those materials allow the flames to spread much faster. So that limits the amount of time that we have to get inside and do our work. As you can see, the highways present challenges for us in regards to vehicle incidents. With the new construction on the highway and the the volume of traffic coming and going from this area. We we see multi-vehicle incidents and they can be quite challenging as well. The hope is that we're becoming a bit of a tourist community as well, so so we draw lots of people into the potholes and to the areas around us. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, climate change does play a part, you know, flooding, atmospheric rivers, heat domes, wildfire. All those things add to our service. The gray box that's a little bit highlighted there speaks to some of the development that we're looking at as we move forward. And again, those challenges are significant for us in regards to stopping trucks for our responses. So let's talk a little bit about service levels. So at Council's direction, Sue Fire Rescue adopted the full service operations level back in two thousand sixteen. What that basically means is is we provide full fire service to the community of soup. So we do all facets of fire service, first response, structured fires, vehicle incidents. Flooding, emergency management, all these things come together are under our umbrella, so to speak. One of the things I like to to ask is, is council committed to continue offering this level of service to our community? And I think that's a fair question or a statement, however you want to look at it. You know, we provide a great service right now and what does that look like moving forward? What are the impacts for us? This slide might be a little bit familiar to some of you in the room because it's one I use for our orientation session. This basically just shows incident statistics over the last few years. You can see that our call volumes are gradually increasing. Obviously, growth and development will have an impact on that as well as climate change will continue to impact that as we move forward. These responses are managed primarily by our department. But it's important to know that we also have mutual and automatic aid agreements with neighboring communities. And without those agreements in place, it would probably be quite a bit more challenging. However, having said that, those agreements don't mean that we automatically get that help. They have to first and foremost protect the communities that they they work in. So if we get a response, that's amazing. And if we don't, there's really not much we can do about that. This is a snapshot of where we are today. And our responses, when we look at a daytime response versus a nighttime response. So our current pattern is a day shift model only. So seven days a week, we have people in the fire hall. From seven in the morning till six at night. That's usually comprised of a three-person crew or a platoon, as we say. That platoon is made up of a fire captain and two firefighters. Now, depends on vacation and or sick time, but it may not always be three people. It can be down to two as well. Nighttime is a totally different concept because we don't have career staff in the hall. At nighttime, we rely on our paid on call. So what that looks like is. We have a nighttime response comprised of a duty officer or a senior firefighter. And usually a duty crew of. One or possibly three firefighters. So they're obligated to respond to any incidents that come in after six o'clock. The challenge is is they're responding from their house. To come to the fire hall to get a truck to go to the incident. So there's a time lag there. And that time delay actually hampers good outcomes. When you think about medical calls or structured fires. We want to get there and arrive as fast as we can, so time is important. And then my role as a chief officer was I basically on call sort of twenty four seven. And I would assist as need be depending on the significance of the call. So this is where we're going to be moving to effective this year. So what we're trying to achieve is a twenty four hour a day, seven day a week response. That would be comprised of a day shift as well as a night shift. So all those folks would be physically in the fire station, which would help us eliminate that lag in response time. So what what we'll be doing initially is reducing the current crew structure from a three-person crew. To a two-person platoon. And that would allow two firefighters in the station at all times. Now, you're probably wondering what value there is to having two firefighters in a station. On a truck to respond to any significant incident or any incident in general. The value is is that time delay and the other side of that value is the fact that we can get there and set up a strategic plan. So we arrive on scene, we do what we call a size up and we determine what resources we need moving forward. So there is value to having that. We're out the door quicker. We've got a truck that's capable of meeting some of those needs and we can get a response sketched out. With the hope that the paid on call arrive. To augment the response and have a successful end. The other benefit to moving to this model is it actually lines up with our Fire Master Plan. And as we purchase equipment and do our training. It will fall in line with that. That plan had a lot of really good information in it. And I will continue to use it as a roadmap to the future. And as we move forward and face more growth, there certainly would be more demands placed on this service. Okay, so the big question today is, is why do we need more staff? Well, I've touched on a few reasons and and now I'll look at a few more reasons just in more detail. There we go. So this particular slide really talks about, you know, meeting community safety and well-being goals. Some of our challenges are listed here and I'll just touch on them briefly. So we want to offset the risk of an inadequate response. So basically inadequate response means not enough resources, meaning either trucks or staff to operate safely and effectively. We want to try and achieve that ten minutes response time, which is very crucial when we think about medical responses and or fire responses. We want to ensure adequate staffing for the challenges that the new development brings. So as I suggested earlier, the mid-rise, the low-rise buildings require significantly more staff on site to be successful. We want to reduce the risk of burnout and ensure fatigue management. So as it stands now, there's lots of overtime, staff are putting in lots of hours. And with the things they're seeing on a day-to-day basis, they need relief from that. They need time away to decompress. We want to align our resources with the community growth. We also want to follow the minimum training standards that we've adopted through service level. And again, we want to follow the recommendations put forth in the Fire Master Plan. Okay, this particular slide just sort of highlights some of the resources we require depending on the type of response we're going to. So you can, and I'm not sure if you can see it that clearly there, but I'll just touch on it here. Is the high hazard occupancies like the schools, the hospitals, nursing homes, facilities that offer care. That have high occupancies in them. Best practices stated by National Fire Protection Association. Says that we should have not less than twenty four firefighters and two chief officers on site for a call of that nature. We go down to the next one, it's a medium hazard occupancy, so like apartments and office buildings. They're suggesting six firefighters and a chief officer. Low hazard, which would be your your basic structure fires. We would look at not less than twelve firefighters and one chief officer. And then so on and so forth. And then not to mention that as we are going to these responses and putting forth our best effort. There may be other calls that are coming in at the same time, so it's really depleting our resources. All all of those things there also work in in conjunction with what our requirements are under WorkSafe BC. So WorkSafe BC has a part thirty one. That speaks to firefighting and what we need to do and how we need to set ourselves up for success in regards to entry into buildings. So obviously, we're going to enter into buildings to perform some form of rescue or to try and search out the seat of the fire to perform extinguishment. But before we can actually safely, excuse me, enter into the building, we have to have things in place on the fire ground, meaning rescue teams and other resources. Okay, so I tried to put some graphics in here that would give you a bit more of a picture of where we were going and what that looks like. So this is a snapshot as to what will take place in May of this year. So again, we're going to reduce our crew sizes from three-person platoons to two-person platoons. With the two staff that we've just hired, we're going to create four platoons of two. So what that means is there's eight career firefighters. Those career firefighters will work two days and then two nights and then they'll get four days off. That's why we need eight to make that model successful twenty four seven. There's a little snapshot of the calendar in the slide there. The firefighters to the far right of the slide are our paid on call staff. And currently, we have trained up a number of those folks. That can assist us with implementing this model, meaning covering off any sort of sick time or vacation that's required for the pay or for the career staff. So again, four platoons, crews of two, ten-hour days, fourteen-hour nights, seven days a week. And as I said earlier, it really is a model about getting the truck out the door quickly and on scene to start designing and developing our attack. So as we move into twenty twenty four. We're going to bump up those numbers by two. So what that does is it starts to. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Thank you. As I said, we're going to bump up our staff by two. What we need to do is we need to get some depth. We need our crews to be more than two people. So we can provide efficiencies and operate safely. That's the real idea behind having crews of three or four people. Is so we can get there and be safe in our operations. And at the same time, we're going to be augmenting our responses utilizing paid on call. Okay, so as we get into twenty five, we'll be asking for another two, which again just increases that depth and allows us to be efficient. Twenty six, same sort of animal. We've got two crews of four and two crews of three. And then once we get into twenty seven. That will allow us to sort of hit pause. We've got four crews of four firefighters. We've got our paid on call who we still will rely on for support. And we have a little bit of depth there, so vacation and sick time should not be an issue. We should be able to cover off those things using the career staff that you currently see there. Okay, and then this, from this point forward, staffing needs would really align with growth and what the call volume is. We would have to start looking at it from a different lens and determining, you know, if Suk's growth has slowed down or if it's sped up or if it's maintaining. Okay. Okay, so this slide speaks to costs, so I'm going to pass the the mic over to our CFO, Ms. Gray.
Thank you, Chief Ryder. So I'll just provide a brief summary of kind of what's included in the report in front of you. And then happy to answer any questions as we get into this. So similar to our CMP. Fire represents twenty twenty one percent of the district's overall budget, so that's a significant portion of the budget. Council, you know, one thing to point out is with the ratification of the new IFF agreement. There has been a commitment to transition towards twenty four seven coverage. By October twenty twenty four, as Chief Ryder showed you, we technically achieve that. With the hiring of two firefighters, but it's not sustainable long-term model. The current staff would just get burnt out, overtime would be excessive. So that's why, based on the recommendations in the master plan, there is that we're requesting increase it to an actual usable, sustainable model of four platoons of four officers. So based on the new ratified agreement, the salary and benefit cost for year one firefighter is a hundred and one thousand dollars. With this model, so in order to fund this, we have different mechanisms available than the RCMP does. My my first recommendation would be, as council's aware, later on this year, there will be an asset management plan being presented to council. And as part of the takeaway of that plan will be to revise a bunch of a a significant, maybe five or six of our reserve funds. That are dedicated to capital projects because we won't need five different funds. We will be recommending to allocate funding into one specific asset management fund that can be then used as needed throughout. The years to fund these. So which is why then this. Fire Protection Capital Reserve Fund that was created in nineteen ninety nine is kind of the first. Avenue of the in bullet four, it says money funding may be paid into this fund. May means I don't do it unless I have surplus funds. May is not a must. You know, language is very, you know, specific when it comes to the finance world. May just means it's an option. So, you know, in prior years when there was significant wildfire revenue, you know, I negotiated with fire department and they used some of that revenue to buy some equipment that one year. But it but it's optional, whereas this saying may, it it's not, it doesn't have enough teeth behind this. So this fund would be, this reserve fund would be recommended to be. Rescinded and replaced with a more comprehensive asset management fund. So that kind of deals with that fund specifically. You know, in order to replace that, again, due to the potential increasing needs of the fire department. You know, once the staffing is up, there will always be new trucks and other equipment and things like that that will need to be purchased. And to have more funding available, the the first recommendation would be. You know, staff will bring forward a recommendation to create a future fire cost reserve funds. Where additional surplus funds that are created throughout the year can be allocated. You know, the most notable one would be wildfire revenue. While it's not. Confirmed that we obviously are going to have a wildfire every year. Historically, the district, as I stated in the report, has received on average a seventy one thousand dollars a year in wildfire revenue. For twenty twenty one, specifically, we received a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars of wildfire revenue net. So in theory, that's those funds could be deposited into there. As one mechanism of funding in that account. And then that could be used in future years as whether it be for staffing or if there are other. Fire needs, those funds could be accessed for that. Another avenue we'll be exploring to help fund these officers are sorry, RCMP, oh my gosh, too many. Firefighters would be with the new deputy chief starting from from a different municipality. He's bringing some ideas on some fire department cost recovery fees. So staff will be doing a deep dive into that later this year. This is more for twenty twenty four budget cycle. These first two items wouldn't be so much a twenty twenty three budget cycle item. So we'll be looking into that and bringing forward proposed amendments to the fees and charges by law as applicable. And then the request from. And then the uh, request from that would be at the time this presented to council would be to. Transfer any funds created from those sources into this fire uh, reserve fund just again, so those funds can be used as needed for future needs of the fire department. Um, before briefly pausing on twenty twenty three, there is two firefighters being hired in twenty twenty three. The funding of those, which is approximately two hundred thousand dollars is coming from. Or prorated, sorry, is a hundred and uh, fifty thousand dollars because these positions aren't starting, didn't start January first, they're starting later the year. So. That those funding uh, for twenty twenty three will be allocated from, reallocated from the existing paid on call budget. Of course, that's not sustainable to keep drawing funds from that um, uh, budget going forward. That, this would be a one time injection of. Reallocating the budget um, from salary, from paid on call to salary. And as Chief Rider stated, we still need to leave some funds in that paid on call budget because there will be a need for paid on call. Um, in, in for years to come here. So, so for staff, um, you know, one of the biggest funding mechanisms for this new staff, if, you know, supported by council, will be non-market change as I highlighted earlier. We get anywhere between two hundred and fifty to last year was three hundred thousand of non-market change revenue. The cost of two firefighters would be two hundred thousand dollars a year. So there would be sufficient. Non-market change revenue in a worst case scenario to fund these firefighters. Um, if that's. Was the preference of council is to have this funded with no property taxes because non-market revenue is from new developments in the community. Um, over the prior year, so it wasn't housing that was already taxed in prior year. So it's considered net new funding into the district. So um, that would be kind of definitely, if there wasn't sufficient funds in these reserve, in the reserve fund available, then non-market change would be the next avenue we would look at to fund. Uh, these firefighters to, to reduce its property tax impact. Um, of, of these hires. And then of course, the final metric of that would be property taxes, as I've stated earlier, a one percent tax increase is. Right now, twelve dollars and fifty cents a year per resident, um, a hundred thousand dollars would, would fund uh, one. Firefighter. So um, in a worst case scenario, worst, worst case could be two percent um. A year could be allocated for these few years to get the fire department up to their optimal staffing level. Um. The likelihood of it all happening to be funded by, by current property taxes is pretty slim. Um, because as I've stated, the non-market revenue could be accessed if there was insufficient funds in those. Uh, in the fire uh, reserve fund available to fund those positions. Um, I'll maybe just leave it there. Unless there's any specific questions at this time, or I believe Ted or Chief Rider's almost finished and then we could go from there.
Thanks, Ms. Gray. Okay, so I'll carry on here. So we look at cost benefits. So as we move towards this model, you know, the service never stops. It's going to be twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, three sixty five a year. We're going to protect life and property and keep our community safe. You know, the hope is, is that we can manage this growth and set up a good financial plan to allow us to move forward with this model. You know, one of the things that's worthy of noting is that few services provide realized savings for owners of homes and or commercial properties like fire services does. We provide a significant reduction in house insurance based on having a department of, as this nature. So. I think I've got some stats here that speaks to two thousand fifteen, albeit it's dated, but for example. If a property was worth four hundred fifty thousand dollars and we did not offer a fire service. Their insurance would be fifty four hundred and eighty nine dollars annually. With the service that we provide, their insurance would be fourteen hundred and ninety one dollars. It's a significant saving. So I think in today's numbers. We provide an annual savings to homeowners of around thirty five hundred dollars. Okay, so I just want to touch a little bit on the, the paid on call side of things because they are an important part of what we do. Um, as the slide says, they are a necessary resource. I don't see us ever moving away from having their support. Um, but again, there's competing demands on their time. A lot of them work outside of. A lot of them work outside of Sook. So our responses that we require for the daytime. Has us a, a little bit shortchanged in regards to staffing because they're not obviously coming from Victoria to help us out. So we would get more of a response from them on our night shifts, but it's nothing's guaranteed, as I said earlier. You know, they have family obligations and recruitment and retention is a, a work in progress and it will always be. Okay, the other piece of what we do is emergency management. Um, I'm not going to take a deep dive on this. We have an emergency program. Um, we do need to do some work there, obviously. Um, it's required under legislation, so it's something we're going to be, we're going to be doing, obviously. And um, you know, I think as a district, it's not just upon our fire department to provide this program. We need to train up district staff. To allow an, an opportunity for them to understand what emergency management is and what their role will be in the event of a flood or a fire. Um, right now, the program usually runs off the corner of somebody's desk, which is not the best case scenario. And as we move forward and have further budget conversations, there will be some. Pardon me, some discussion on trying to get a dedicated resource for that role. Here's another piece of the puzzle that is very important to fire prevention and public education. Um, we need to implement a really solid inspection program, which basically boils down to enforcing the fire code, getting out there, working with the businesses. And the developers and coming up with a great inspection program so we can ensure people are compliant. And which at the end of the day reduces the risk of fire. We need to get into our schools and, and reach out to those uh, younger populations and educate them about fire safety. Um, we've got an active fire smart program going. That takes a lot of work. Currently it's grant funded and we're seeing some successes, but it's slow to move. Uh, just based on lots of reasons. One of the primary reasons is there's a bit of a myth around. The rainforest and the island and it not being such a, a hazard, but that's not true. It is a hazard. And uh, I want to do some more work with the, the older population and, and implement programs such as older wiser, which is fire safety for the elderly and. Making the things safe for them and making them aware of what we can do to assist them. And again, some of these things will be further discussed at our budget meetings. So at the end of the day, when we think about what we offer as a service here, there's obviously the suppression side of it, or the boots on the ground, or the firefighters on the truck. But there's also the, the administrative side of it. So the chief, the deputy, the fire prevention inspector, the emergency management coordinator. And all that administrative support. So what we're trying to do here as we move forward and grow is provide some form of balance. We want to have the administrative support to allow us to be successful, but we also need to have the boots on the ground to have an efficient, effective response. So these are our key priorities listed here for twenty twenty three, so I'll just review those quickly. Uh, we want to restructure, welcome new staff, implement the twenty four seven model. Uh, foster that relationship with our paid on call ranks. We need to look at our emergency management legislation. We need to focus on climate change and what the impact is in regards to our service. Need to uh, implement that fire inspection program and a public education program. Work on coming up with the best case scenario for implementation over fire master plan. And continue doing the great work we're doing with the fire smart and the community wildfire resilience plan. And I think that. Brings me to the end, so I'd be happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation, Chief Rider. A lot of. Excellent information and facts there for us. So open it up to members of council, reactions, questions, comments. Counselor Bateman is kicking it off.
Thanks for ending with those seven fire hoses, the seven of us here fire hose. I'm sure that was accidental. Um. You know, I, I don't have a lot of questions here. Um, we as a district have committed, and I don't think this council, I don't know, we're, we're still. I'm pretty sure we're committed to full service operations. I, I, I guess I have a question for uh, Ms. Gray and that through you. Um, the question of how, how many other staff positions are we likely to see in this budget and over the course of the five year plan?
Um, to your worship, we're just finalizing that right now. There's, I mean. If every department had their way, there's probably six or seven staff they would ask for, but as part of. Our work is, is we go through as a leadership team and prioritize where the greatest needs are based on council priorities. Other projects that are ongoing and where the greatest needs are. So. Would six or seven ask be presented to you? Definitely not. We would narrow that down to something more reasonable. Historically. As council's been supporting using non-market change for staffing, there's been about two to three positions a year being requested. Um, to be funded with a non-market change. So I anticipate it would be the same thing um, presented going forward. So again, as I stated, worst case scenario, we could fund two of those firefighters with. Non-market change in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven. Um, that would just leave potentially a hundred thousand dollars, give or take, obviously with a growing community will, um, that number should probably increase. Um. Available for other operations staff to use.
And here's a que- question, in terms of non-market revenue, we don't receive that from individuals who rent, of course, and so can of course, many of our new. New project, at least um, three quarters of those cited earlier are, are rentals. Of the four hundred and something that are incoming.
Yeah, uh, to your worship, uh, correct. We don't. Receive non-market change from rent, from rentals, but we receive it from the building that was built. Like we get the not, because that building is taxed, it's not tax free. So depending on how that building has been assessed, we will. It makes it under the tax roll from B C assessment, and so then we can start. Um, collecting property taxes from those properties. So well, rental doesn't really affect me. It's, once the building's built and has occupancy, then. We start uh, receiving, can we start receiving tax revenues from that.
Okay. And a question to the chief, um, paid on call, of course, back in twenty nineteen, when, when this council. Um, and I'm not sure you were here at the time nor the counselor Pearson. But uh, we approved that phased paid on call for the volunteer department and your predecessor thought that, that that might get us to as many as fifty. Volunteer firefighters, or that was his optimum uh, goal. Um. You, you see a, as you said, a continuing composite force. Moving ahead. Yes, that's not a question. Um, Jeff, come up with a question. I know, paid on call, if those individuals will no longer need to muster here at the station, they will go straight to incident site? Is that how that will work under your twenty seven model? Twenty more seven.
Uh, not quite correct. No, no. So I'll just go back a little bit. So. The paid on call model that was implemented, just kind of as I was getting here. I think it was. Done for all the right reasons. Whether it's sustainable or achievable is the, another conversation which we won't have today, but at the end of the day, in my experience, it's a rotating door. We bring in people that are keen and excited and want to learn and have the best interest of the community and the organization. But life changes. They either move or they get, you know, just different commitments, so they end up leaving. So we see a lot of time and energy going into recruitment and retention. And sometimes it's just difficult. It's kind of frustrating if you look at all the hours that go into training somebody and then to lose them. It's just, it's not the best case scenario. Having said that, they will still be a valued. Part of this organization. But they'll be used more as support as we continue to grow. So if in fact, we continue to grow our career ranks. Then the paid on call ranks won't be so critical. That we will need them. I'm not suggesting we won't need them, but they won't be so critical. So we will continue to keep that team at a reasonable number, which I hope to think is around thirty as we keep moving. It sort of hinges between thirty and forty. Uh, we're having a bit of a low year right now because we've, we've lost some folks to other things and that's just the way it is. So. So we're going to keep recruiting. We'll do our best to retain them, but there's no guarantees with it, right? So back to your question, then, they will be coming to the hall to get their gear on and to grab a vehicle to go to the incident.
But just to add to that, Council Bateman, there would be two firefighters at the hall that would already have been deployed.
Yes.
So they're already on site by the time the others arrive here, get suited up and go. So there's not a delay there. Counselor Pearson then Beddoes.
Thank you, and through the chair, thank you, chief. Great presentation. So I have a few questions. Say always. Um, the one that always jumps off that screen earlier on in, in the, in the pie chart is that fifty six percent of your calls are medical. You, you know, you know, you're a politician and you sit over here and you look at that and think, well, is that really the role of the fire department? I mean, and that's, I will get asked that. Um, so what's your, your thoughts on? Is that an opportunity to save or is it just part of doing business in the community? I guess that made my first question.
So uh, like my counterpart to my left, that's one of those questions that's, it's not easy to answer. I think it comes down to what you folks as a mayor and council want to see this service level at. You have the latitude and the ability to look at that service level and pick and choose what you want for this community. Having said that, yes, we do realize that a big number of our responses are medically driven or B C ambulance support. Based on our first responder agreement we have, right? You know, I, it just goes back to community service. I, I can't really say much more than that. I can't fix what's going on with B C ambulance. I don't pretend to understand it all perfectly. But we do provide support to them and when the pager goes off, we respond. And I think it's to the benefit of everybody in this community.
And I predicted that answer. So thank you very much for, for that answer, but I have to ask it anyways because it is, it's a glowing or it's a glaring. Piece of, of, of the presentation and, and is it downloading from some other level of government? I don't know. But anyways, we have an obligation to, to keep our people safe. Um, through the chair to, I think to the finance department, we had a per capita cost for the um. Police services. Do we have a per capita cost for the fire services?
Um, through your worship, to your worship. I don't at this time, I can kind of keep crunching some numbers here.
Okay.
Get back to you.
And again, through the chair, uh, we currently. Um, you talked about the ten minute response time. It, it, it sounded like you were implying we're not meeting ten minute response time. Some areas of our district or there's a risk somewhere out there. And I don't know if you intended to, to do that or not. Um. And I understand that, you know, the addition of two officers will um, greatly um, affect our ability to meet, to meet that ten minute response time. If we're not meeting ten minute response time in some areas, and I suspect, you know, the, the, you know, there's some areas in, in Sun River maybe as an example, because it's a long ways around. Uh, does that affect their insurance rates, the people who live there?
It can. Once we implement this model, if that's the wish of council, um, we will be reaching out to fire underwriters. And letting them know that our model's changed and what that looks like. And, and fire underwriters, they base their insurance rate on three different things. Usually it's where the hall's located. What type of service you're providing, whether that be composite or career, and what your water availability is like. So all those things go into a, a formula and a calculation. And then they come up with best case scenarios for insurance rates. So the ten minute response time that I also refer to is in regards to building code in construction.
Correct.
So spatial distances and separation, you think about new construction, how close can we build things together? Because of the, the risk of fire spread, right? So if we do move forward to this model and we can prove that we can respond within ten minutes. Then we let fire unders writer know, and then there may not be an obligation for a developer to have sprinkler systems in those townhouses or row houses or whatever that may be. So it relaxes some things from that point of view.
Okay, yeah, you anticipated my next question. So thank you. Um. And then my last question is, is, is more on the tactical side. Do you see any changes or risks with um, uh, some of the, some of the climate action plans that we're going to talk about probably related today? With uh, changing technology, like as, as an example, uh, vehicles. Uh, you, you know, we're, we're wanting to increase the number of electric vehicles in our municipalities as, as across the world. Is there any increased risk or training or side effects? Because I've seen um, sort of in the news, some, some severe electrical fires as part of some communication. So just kind of. I, I don't know that you could be able to answer, actually answer that question, but I'd like to hear what you had to say.
Yeah, those vehicles pose significant risk to us from a fire suppression point of view. Um, if you think about what's going on out there with all the vehicles and not to mention uh. Bikes and scooters and such, uh, you're finding storage facilities in these low to mid rise buildings we're developing now. So they're asking for specific rooms to store these things. They do pose a bit of a threat. It's technology is moving forward, so we, we have to train for that, right? So different attacks, different approaches, different tools, those sorts of things.
Yeah, and uh, and, and again, you anticipated my next question. It was around the storage of, of, of electrical devices like we see on airplanes, et cetera, and things like that. So. So is that going to uh, impact other things like the building codes and restrictions and things like that, I guess? And I think you kind of answered that anyways.
Yeah, most of those developments that are happening now, they do have specific rooms that are compartmentized, would have detection and suppression systems in place.
Counselor Beddoes.
Uh, thank you, and through, through the chair, to uh, the chief and staff. Um, first of all, I will be supporting this recommendation. One of course is that it now goes over to our finance people and they'll be able to tell us the numbers, how it's just going to affect over the next number of years. Uh, I, at this point, I think that twenty twenty-seven numbers might be a little rich, but I'll wait till. Our wonderful finance department comes back with those numbers and see see where we stand with that. I did also have some concerns about the. Medical calls, you asked that as best you can, because those are all. Your abilities to. To deal with, all I can say is I'm very thankful that you are there, uh, when we do have a problem on the ground, and I've seen a number in Sook. Uh, that you're a trained firefighters are there, and you're generally there before the ambulance gets there. So that's much appreciated, and I hope that the B C ambulance gets their act together, and they've got a tough sled ahead as well. But you are very much appreciated in this community, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from councillor McMath, councillor Legendos?
Yeah, I. I understand that by going to twenty-four-seven coverage. Commercial insurance rates are are reduced. Is that also true for residential? Rates, and I think you sort of partially answered that, but but just wanted clarification there.
Yeah, so once we implement this model, and as we move forward, we continue to update fire underwriters in regards to. Like I said earlier, whether it be water, staffing, new stations, station locations, all those things. And then they they put us into this model that they have, and they come up with the the new rates based on upgrading your service. So water main sizes and all that sort of stuff plays a part. And it's incumbent upon us to keep that data flowing into them, so we can get the best insurance rates possible.
Okay, see no other questions, you're good councillor McMath? Okay.
Um, some fire departments do an assessment when they tend to structure fire, and they. And it's just a high-level overview, one of the pieces that they. Um, put in their report is the the value of infrastructure saved. And so I'd love to see those numbers from Sook's responses, because they are, like, if you look at the policing and the fire budgets, a huge portion of the district, so to. Justify, I guess is the right word, it'd be great to see property value infrastructure saved from those responses.
So just so I'm clear, then, are you talking about responses that we? Went to in regards to structured fires, or are you wanting to know the total? Estimated value of the real estate that we have here in Sook?
No, the first.
Okay. I would have to get back to you with that.
Yeah, of course, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief, I'd like to ask if there's members of the public that would like to have any questions asked or answered. Comments and the like.
Thank you, Eleanors. I have a number of questions. The calls on climate change is that for wildfires, now, I know councillors. Pearson and and Legendas have been here all their lives, have wildfires increased? In Sook, I've been here for forty years, I've never noticed an increase in wildfires, so it's just a question.
Well, I can't really give you a whole lot of history on wildfires that we've had in Sook, but since I've got here. Obviously, we have not responded to any, however, we do support our partners in the area, and we have training and equipment to be deployed. Which would again assist us in generating some revenue for for this service.
Right, thank you. That answers that question. Uh, I also, I also had the question around the fifty-six percent medical. Having. My husband having a lot of medical calls, a number of times, an ambulance was there already. And a fire, two or two or three fire trucks would show up, why? Because the ambulance is there, so is there any communication? If the ambulance is already attending. Is there a communication to the firefighters to say, stand down, the ambulance is there?
One would hope that there's communication, we do respond together, a lot of the times, as you know, B C ambulance is delayed based on their limited resources. Um, we would arrive and do what we do, but the challenge with us is we don't transport patients, so we have to continue to wait for B C ambulance to get there. Until they clear us of any sort of patient care, we will not be leaving. Once they arrive and assume patient care, then we would be good to go.
Yeah, I I understand, yes, and but if there's an, I guess that's where an improvement could be, if the ambulance is communicating that they're there already, then it would. Not, you know.
Um, because I work in dispatch.
Pardon me?
I work in dispatch.
Right.
So what will happen is if ambulance is there prior to fire, then they are to notify if fire is not required. Sometimes they still have them continued for a lysis or patient extraction. So if they arrive on scene, or if there is a change from their original assessment where the call is downgraded. And it's no longer a part of the fire department's response model, they will call fire dispatch and dispatch will relay. And stand on fire council quite frequently, they get there close to the same time, usually fire is there before, because a lot of B C ambulance crews. Will get pulled because much like police with transport, they have to go all the way to Victoria. Or Callwood to drop those patients off, and then once they're in there in those higher-dense areas, those crews will stay in those areas, so Sook. Machosen, anywhere out here, you see a lot of significant delays. Um, if you have trucks still coming, it's just that the communication window is too small, or B C ambulance still wants them to continue with patient assistance.
Thank you. Uh, another question I have is many times. My sons are in the fire department as well, many times a fire department is is left dead on on traffic accidents during flagging. Directing traffic. Another creative thing perhaps to maybe look at is maybe hiring flaggers to do that instead of firemen. Having flaggers on call.
Yeah, one would agree with that statement, we do utilize Victoria contracting for flagging. Um, it really depends on the situation and the call volume and what's going on out there. Traffic control is something that we do, obviously for safety reasons, to protect our own people when we're on scene. Having said that, if the incident is over and there's still a need for traffic control. We usually work with the R C M P and or Victoria contracting, and and again, it's all situational, it depends on who's doing what and how busy we are.
Right, I I guess there again, I'm thinking about cost of firemen and policemen and precious time. If it's a flagger that could be used, should be flaggers. Search and rescue, is search and rescue involved? In any way with the fire department? Do we have a search and rescue, or are you working with the surgeon, search and rescue in Sook?
It's a provincial service.
There. Man, yeah, there is search and rescue here, I don't specifically have. A deep relationship with them, I know they're here, I know they respond to different events. You know, in my previous life, I worked with them, we've trained with them, but since I've landed here in Sook. I know they have a group, and they perform a lot of the rescues that most fire departments may or may not do, depending on our skill sets and our training, so.
Right, thank you. Um. You were saying six or seven staff, and in here you're saying firefighters, a hundred and one thousand, so that's pretty easy to figure out, that's seven hundred and seven thousand. Uh, that you'd be looking at for. For seven firemen.
Implemented over those four years, that's correct.
Right. And and you're saying you need twenty-six, between twenty-six and thirty, firemen for a six-story building is what's required? Firefighters. Firefighters, right, so what's our, what's our firefighter? Uh, capacity at present?
Don't quote me on the exact number, but we're probably sitting in with. You know, close to thirty collectively, meaning career and composite. In those instances, we would have automatic or mutual aid as well, with the hopes that our neighboring departments would provide support to us.
Okay, okay, thank you, and I have another question on, what page is that? Page one hundred and fifty-two, I don't know what that means, it says general incident type, and it says F M R, what's F M R?
It's first medical response, I believe.
Oh, okay, got it, okay. And. You also reduce the the time of fire for open fire burning for. Clearing, clearing our lands. And I would think that that would be part of. What's it called, trying to keep to keep. Our lands clear, free from. Fire, getting rid of brush and all that sort of thing.
Are you speaking with our burning regulations or?
Our burning regulations, yes.
Uh, again, that's something that I was probably not involved with. I'm aware of what you're speaking about.
Right.
Uh, and I would probably need to get a little bit more clarification from you as to what you're.
I I guess, well, what's it called when you? When you're. Clearing, clearing out the land, so that that you don't have.
Like fire smarting your house, your property?
Yeah, fire smarting your property, thank you, that's a, that's a word. So. Because you're, it's talked about in here about fire smarting your property, so how do you fire smart your property if?
That's things like not leaving dry branches next to your house, the type of plants that you plant, I've learned pampas grass that I like a lot is very hazardous, very dry. If you're going to plant a tree, this or that, like, that's all fire smarting your property, what type of fencing materials, where you store ignitable things?
Right, right.
Is that your question?
I I understand that, I'm just saying the ability to do it is is the other part that's missing.
Well, that's why we have a fire smart prevention officer who's out helping educate residents, and a lot of residents have been taking that up, because it's a way of keeping their property. Or looking at their property through a different lens. So I don't.
Is the question, why have burning regulation, why has that window been shrunk? When it's.
But yes, drunk, when it's part of fire prevention, right, right. When it's part of, thank you, that's, thank you for figuring that out for me. Yeah, because it's so the time to actually. Reduce the fire. Material on your property is reduced, the time to actually get rid of it. I mean, I have a three-acre property, and it's a lot of stuff to get rid of, and 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 of course, you've got the fire burning days, which are ridiculous. And so you can't, you can't get rid of this stuff, and so we're here and.
Well, we're certainly seeing from citizens the need to have some other yard waste type of service, so that folks, because not everyone is able to burn or wants to. Uh, and then how can they remove the material in a safe way, um, what contractor can come and take it and the like, what role can the district play? In the removal of stuff, because and we're also recognize that burning the materials also has a negative health impact on those with. Complex health issues.
Well, there's a whole, there's a whole discussion around that, right, because, yeah. For me, wood ashes go back in the garden, that's where they belong, so. So there's, there's a whole discussion around that, I think that we have to talk about. So I won't take it any further with that, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Lurs, other members of the public wish to ask any questions or comments on the fire? Presentation? Okay, so I'll turn this back to council, did you have a question or comment, councillor Legendos?
Uh, yeah, just a comment on whether we need to have. Firefighters do flagging for emergencies, to my knowledge, I don't know that there are any. Flagging companies that have people on call that could respond to emergency, so I think it's. It's incumbent upon our firefighters to take on that role.
Well, and chief answered how it's councillor McMath?
Yeah, and just to follow up, so if it's on, if it's from Victoria contracting, then dispatch contacts those flaggers, they get a call out. They go get their stuff, and then they come out, and so typically, especially with Sook Road. They can't wait, like, for their own member safety, like, they immediately have to start having flaggers out there, so typically by the time. Contracting gets flaggers out there, they're really usually not required anymore, that's why you don't see them as much, and then sometimes. In the day, we have like a structured fire, bylaw is incredibly supportive, and we'll jump on and we'll go help out with that. But that's why you'll see fire or police doing flagging before you see any contractor.
Councillor Bateman?
Uh, just a comment around the wildfire incidences here in in the the South Island, you know, we've had over the last number of years. I think it was on Muir Creek, along Kemp Lake Road, and on Henland. Near you, not so long, your former you. So yes, there there have been incidents, and if if the winds had been high on those particular days, there could have been some issues. The emergency operations center did a training that looked at Aaron Estates going up. Uh, in flames, and they develop procedures. And I think just generally with the drought-like conditions we're seeing in recent summers and the the course of. Statistical changes in in climate. Yeah, wildfires are a concern in this region.
There's also been fires up on the top of Sacred Mountain, what's been known as Broome Hill, regularly, there have been in up at the top of the C to C. Uh, the C R D staff have their own staff within the watershed and within the park department as well. Uh, often hikers or mountain bikers have been reporting those, uh, which is why just getting more intel on where they're located, because I know our crews have had to hike into those particular areas. And up in the area past Sun River, uh, there's been fires in that area as well, so. It it's just, since I've served as mayor, there's been a variety of different emergencies, uh, sometimes the fire response, um, you've had unfortunate. There was a tsunami event, uh, certainly the atmospheric flooding events, concerns around earthquake, Sukalimentary has had two fires in it. Uh, as well as a gas leak, uh, which required the school, all outside of school hours except one in the early morning. And numerous amount of different motor vehicle collisions and the like. Trying to think of a few others, I don't try to retain them all, because it's entirely, it's very depressing, actually, uh, to think about. Uh, in terms of the the medical and the ambulance, um, I recognize that the medical is a significant part of our cost, but where would we be without it? Uh, we have been increasing our police response as well as our fire response, certainly since I've been elected, but we've not seen much change, I think it's just still the four cars. It's it's an ongoing issue that we advocate and bring to the provincial, the province attention, because it is there, it is under their realm there. And the more we do is our community, to make our community safe and resilient, it positions us into a better position to advocate. Um, we did a deep dive through my health committee into medical stats and looking at what could we serve locally? And versus what could go elsewhere, and in some cases, yes, there are calls that can be done. Locally within Sook, but for some, depending on the call, and it's a C task rating, it's an automatic, you need to get to Royal Jubilee, that's a, that's a cardiac call. Of which we don't have an A L S specific vehicle located in Sook, although we do have a highly trained. Paramedic in that skill set, which is why you see the patient transfers on the side of the highway. In some cases, it depends on what's happening in the home. Uh, in some cases, yes, an ambulance will come and the fire service will be there before and after, there could be small children that have woken up to this. Certainly, uh, maybe seeing a parent taken away, having. And then just imagine what that looks like within the home. Uh, one case, my dad felt there was blood everywhere, uh, police were called, we weren't sure he was living alone, what the incident was, if someone had broken into this event. I was naturally very upset at the time, so having. Uh, my father removed while also somebody settled me down, while we dealt with what to do next was extreme benefit, whereas otherwise I would have been alone. Like many others within our community. Uh, so having a reassuring presence on the ground to make sure that the family or whatever support network is left behind is also cared for and connected, I think is a value and something that. We're very grateful that our community provides, it's been talked around for the over the decade that I've served, well, what if we didn't do this or that, well. Council, if you decide to make that decision, it's an open decision, and then you can decide. What if you don't want the service here? Who's going to respond and what's going to happen, and so think about that, and maybe just hope that you're not the one that needs to make that call. And not have anybody respond, and what that looks like. Any life lost is one too many, any life struggling is one too many. Uh, and I mentioned the opioid crisis, our firefighters have to respond to that too, what are they walking into? What do they see, what's remaining, what's going on in the home, they don't know the inside. Of each home and the situation and what's going on there, so it's also their well-being, the family they're leaving behind. To respond, whether it's our fire, our police, or our paramedics, it's unknown every single time that they walk in. And what's in there and what's happening beyond, so just very grateful, I know that we all have our part to play, we'll continue to advocate where we can, we can do that strongly together. But at the same time, I think it's just assurances and to continue to be proud that we live in a safe place, and we're doing our best to make it, so. Some folks are more resilient than others, some have more support than others, and. But I just think of children, and I hear about it sometimes when a father or mother is taken, and they're alone in the house, and now. The call, who do you call, and who comes in, and all these pieces are significantly disrupted to a young person, and they need that support in their home, so thank you for the work that you're doing. Okay, so. Moving on to our recommendation. And so that would be then that the committee of the whole. Recommends council endorse the implementation of the firefighter staffing recommendations from the fire master plan. Recommends council endorse the implementation of the firefighter staffing recommendations from the fire master plan. FMP and approve a four year staffing strategy, strategy for inclusion in the twenty twenty-three to twenty-seven, five-year financial plan. Moved by Councilor Betos, no seconders required. Would you like to speak to the recommendation, Councilor Betos?
No, uh, I, I do actually, just very briefly, uh, I know now this goes back to our finance and uh they, they do work the numbers and come back to us with a recommendation and uh. I, I think it uh is a very. Good plan. Uh, hopefully we can afford it all, but we're certainly gonna lean in that direction. Thank you.
Other comments, Councilor Lajiness?
No, I'm always happy to support our first responders. Um. Uh, until you need them, it seems like, seems like an extravagant uh expense. But I wouldn't be sitting here today if, if not for our first responders dragging me out of a creek one night with a broken back. So I'm always happy to, to know that you're there.
Other comments? Okay, call the question all in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief, for your report. And that brings us to our final item in today's agenda. Oh, which I seem to have put away. Sorry about that. Number three, this is our Suk twenty thirty climate action plan and next steps. Back to staff, please.
Thank you, your worship and council. Um, Ms. Moog helped significantly preparing this uh report and PowerPoint that I'm going to go through today. So she is back there and can hopefully help answer some questions that uh council may have as we go through this. Um, okay. So uh, this is a different request than the fire and uh RCMP asked. Because there is a funding already established as councils aware, they have the additional um. Care of two point O funding, um, that has been allocated municipalities for three years. Um, so the purpose of this report is really just to seek um. To provide counsel and update on what staffer have been doing with this climate action plan since it was supported um in principle by council back on July twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-two. Okay, um, so implementation. Um, a- and as I just said, I just wanted to highlight that the district is eligible for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the next three years in climate action program stream funding. Um, the requirement of that is to contribute twenty percent or twenty-seven thousand dollars um in order to leverage all of those funds. Uh, so as council is aware, um. Council supported, including climate action as a separate line item in the budget um from previous uh budgets. And in twenty twenty-two, the current budget was a hundred and nine thousand dollars and it is increasing by five percent a year um in the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six financial plan. Um. So with the plan being adopted in principle in July and the subsequent departure of our um. Uh, our contract or coordinator, uh, Maya Karisfeld, um, who is now with the CRD. Um, and the election staff have had the option to reflect on how best to proceed. And while um also operationalizing some aspects of the plan as we work towards meeting council's emission reduction targets. As mentioned in the report, staff have identified thirty items to move forward with this year and all can be achieved with the already established funding. Um, early successes, I just wanted to pause for a second here and highlight some early successes we've had um with this plan. Um, you know, some, some highlights that reflect some of the climate action plan and um. Motivations and incentives would be the capital improvements such as the decanter centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant that reduces power consumption at the plant by as much as forty percent. Uh, we also have the implementation of the building energy step code with the planning, development and building services departments um spearheading that work. From financial services aspect, uh, you know, one quick fix we're doing is going paperless with invoicing. We just rolled out that um initiative last week. And so the goal of that is to have, stop having paper being printed and, and filtered around the office. You know, it's a small thing, but I think with Suk, we've realized small steps go a long way uh and help in our overall picture here. So that's just a, a focus. Um, bylaw services mentioned before, council supported using uh those care fundings at the time to purchase an e-bike. So that's used as a carbon neutral means of transportation around the community by our bylaw officer. Um, we've also been spearheading efforts with the implementation of the transportation master plan, um, which included the church roads phase one project and the Otter Point project, which um included the acts of transportation corridors in those projects as well as transit stop improvements. And um. And uh on top of that as well would be the implementation of parks and trails master plans. Some of those examples included wayfinding trail signage and trail expansions that have occurred. Um, on the more community engagement front, uh, we've been releasing videos on transportation mode shifts and home heating through our various channels on our website, let's talk Suk website, um, and as well as Twitter. Uh, and other, any other mail out or any other initiatives, anytime we have a chance to promote um uh, all the good work we've been trying to do to achieve our climate uh goals. Uh, we try and get those out in as many means of communication as possible. Um. Uh, highlighting so monthly newsletters as well. Um, and those newsletters go highlighting tips for households um. That are focusing on cost savings. Um, this isn't an exhaustive list, but it's just intended to capture that the organization-wide approach staffer taking to help council reach their mission retard, reduction goals. And I think we've said this multiple times, like the climate action plan isn't just sitting with one department and one person. It's ingrained in all departments and all operations that we do now has a climate lens to it. As you notice, the community safety is talking about fire, you'll hear, or sorry, about climate. Um, a- and as budget uh twenty twenty-three is presented to council, you'll hear that filtered throughout all, any of the new funding asked. Is there a climate lens to it? What have we done to address the climate impacts for the specific department? Um, but. I'm clicking on the wrong way. Uh, this, this slide here shows um some preliminary, preliminary data um and highlights that we're seeing a difference in our community. Uh, this slide highlights um some data from the CRD on what's happening specific to Suk. And you can see there's a reduction in heating with fossil fuels and an uptake in electric vehicles. Again, this is preliminary data. Awesome data is expected to come in the fall and maybe revise slightly as CRD completes their analysis. Um. So while you may have some questions in this area, I encourage patience as uh the CRD is actively, actively analyzing this data and will report out on it later this year. Uh, definitely another factor of our climate action plan implementation is leveraging on our partnerships with other um. Organizations, as council knows, CRD came to a meeting um with the last budget cycle to request. Um, uh, a support uh of CRD increasing their climate funding that they collect through our CRD requisition, which was supported by council at the time. Um, a- and so CRD obviously has way bigger, um, way more staff, economies of scale. They can achieve a lot more with a lot less um compared to the District of Suk. So that, that's definitely a key focus for, for us. Okay, um. So, and again, we don't, I don't want to just sit here and come to repeat the content of the report. There's a few elements that we wanted to highlight. Um, one is how involved the team is in working together with the implementation. You can see that the draft implementation schedule and the persons responsible for taking the leadership role um in the identified action items are from nearly every service area um in district operations. Uh, second factor would be prioritizing, including an adaption response and some of the high cro- highest climate risk for Suk such as wildfire, increased storm severity and the work, the deputy fire chief and the fire smart. Um, with the work of the deputy fire chief and the fire smart coordinator. As well, the other aspect would be the opportunity through the hiring of a manager of planning to support the team and not just applying the low carbon resilience lens, but to further operationalize uh this approach. And doing so in a way that optimizes the environmental, social and economic benefits for the community is, has always been a core focus of the district. Another avenue would be um mobilizing the community. Suk is a town of many talents. We've had exports in local food production, groups upcycling and conducting repair cafes. Those removing invasive species, interest in broader tree planting initiatives. And through year one implementing the twenty thirty plan, staff want to better understand how we can truly realize these talents, which is why one of the key items identified for twenty twenty-three is a seed granting program. Another component of mobilizing the community is following up on a recommendation from the Climate Action Committee and having Dr. Elizabeth Lang and Dr. Shandel Holden present to council on how community development and climate engagement society would serve and enhance climate action initiatives in the District of Suk. This will be coming on March twentieth as a delegation to council, so stay tuned for further information from those two presenters. Uh, one more item when it comes to mobilizing the community would be our communications coordinator. Um, which is already connect, she's already connected with local school to see what interest there is in working together on a walk and roll stop initiative. Um, there's keen interest in this item and, and staff see it as identified in the active school plans as a means to improve congestion around schools and certainly would reduce GHG emissions uh in the process. Uh, one of the la- other items to highlight would be um within year one of actioning the twenty thirty plan is ensuring we make the most of all resources available. When CRD presented to council last year, council had some questions about that investment. So I'd also like to highlight uh two initiatives that we're benefiting, benefiting from locally. Uh, the first one would be uh the Home Energy Navigator Program. It's a free program created by the CRD and local government partners. And it's informed by industry experts, including numerous local contractors. It's a free concierge service to help owners, homeowners with energy retrofits and support them navigate, navigating rebates, uh, receive virtual home energy consultations, receive assistance um to review quotes and can provide custom retrofit uh roadmap. Suk residents can access this program at homeenergynav.ca and we also have a link available on our website. A participation in, in Suk since a home navigator program launched in November is relatively high when compared to participation rates around the region. As you can see, if I forward the slide, sorry. Um, Suk is number four in um uptake on that new program, which is, which is um really nice to see. One of the other things um that is supported with our partnership with the CRD is the grant program. Council may recall, there was a resolution passed at a previous council meeting to support us partnering with the CRD and as well as other municipalities on a grant for um electric vehicle infrastructure and installing that in the communities. So it's called the Charger Ride and uh the electro. The electrical vehicle infrastructure program is currently under development. Charger Ride is an education campaign that connects persons with ride solutions that are alternative to combustion energy and engines. The solution specifically focused on saving money, reducing carbon pollution and improving health and fitness. The Charger Ride booth will be coming out to Suk this spring, so stay tuned for that. And in regards to electrical vehicle infrastructure program, Suk collaborated with the CRD on a grant application last year, which will provide funding for both the provincial and federal governments to expand community EV charging infrastructure. For Suk specifically, we have identified eight locations throughout, through this program. The status of this grant should be known by the fall of this year. And managing this application is not something we have the resources to do on our own. So it was a good example of how we were working with our counterparts, specifically with the CRD um to ensure Suk benefits as much as possible through those centralized resources. So that is the Charger Ride program there. And uh twenty thirty commitment, when Maya, the former uh climate action coordinator, presented a draft plan back in July. She talked about this plan being a commitment to action. And I, I hope, you know, for the, for the, what's included in the report and just going over some of the high level items in the PowerPoint presentation here, that you can see how staff are taking that to heart and how we're looking to progress this plan in a realistic uh feasible manner and that we're doing it in a way that's fiscally prudent and responses to both the needs within the district operations and how we relate to the community. And so the recommendation in front of you is that council support. Um, the community of the whole direct staff to proceed with the implementation of the Suk twenty thirty action plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you have and attached to the uh council report was the um implementation plan and a listing of the initiatives that staff are proposing to undertake this year and the known costs for the ones we do know, the other costs are to, to be determined as we roll these programs out this year. And I will leave that there.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Gray. It'll open it up to council members for reactions, comments, questions? Counselor Bateman?
Thank you very much for the report and uh all the thought and deliberation that went into it. Um. I'll save comments for later. Um, the, the manager of planning position as proposed, I've, I've seen two earlier job descriptions for it. Um. I, I haven't seen one here. Uh, I'm making the assumption it's effectively a point five climate action position. Is, is that correct?
Um, I will defer to Ms. Moog and um Mr. Palo back there who has um more insight into the actual makeup of this. As you know, we've been trying to fill the manager planning a few times, haven't been successful and. Act Dev was tied to, so um we're trying to be creative and, and how we can fund this. And because climate and development kind of go hand in hand with the growing community, um. It is why the resources think better serve there, but I will let them speak a little better to that.
So a job description hasn't been uh specified yet in its entirety. There's the existing manager of planning position that, uh, as you had mentioned, you'd seen previous iterations. Um, pending the discussion uh today and ultimately putting the job posting out, this would be an area that we want to focus um in the job advertisement regarding the climate action piece that we would want to seek from a uh potential candidate. Uh, with regards to the division of responsibilities, whether it's a point five or, or how that's divvied up. Uh, we haven't set a specific number. That's, that's a primary function of multiple tasks and that uh, that position will need to undertake. So as we go through the implementation of the action plan, uh, that's where we'll see where we're able to meet all of our targets or if more resources are going to have to be allocated. But um that function, um, as it rests as, as a policy development and implementation piece, uh, as we've discussed, uh, as a group, seems to fit well within our current resources and within the manager of planning's job duties. But just will, that will highlight more that the climate action piece also has a plan that requires implementation as well by that individual in working um in consort with the rest of the uh departments throughout the organization.
Mr. Palo, how do you, how do you see uh planning and climate action working in long term?
Similar to the uh low carbon resilience model that we had uh adopted, uh. Seems like two years ago now. Um, that was something that uh, as we go through the planning process, planners, that, that's how we typically operate. Now that we have an action plan that's been developed with a lot of uh various implementation items. Uh, we'll work to ensure that if it's through a development application process, that applicants are being responsible for that. If it's something that's more uh publicly developed outside of an application process, we'll work on uh tools either through uh Communications Department or um uh Operations Department, if it's uh engineering related or Parks Department. So there's these different avenues that we can do to provide for more of an education piece as well as um, as you see uh in the report, those implementation items, uh, who those are responsible for. It's more uh from a reporting standpoint that we can also have this kind of quarterback in a sense, making sure that we are taking off those checkboxes.
Or the maestro.
Maestra as it were.
Very cleverly. So I, I did read in the report, uh, the manager of planning will also be responsible for the uh part, uh, FCM's Partners for Climate Protection five milestone. We're at milestone three at the moment and there are two more to go. I think that is uh milestone three is develop the client, the local action plan. Milestone four, implement the local action plan or set of activities which are being proposed here as year one of a seven-year rollout. Uh, if indeed we're to follow the, the logic of Suk twenty thirty and the seven percent annual reduction strategy or. Aspiration, I think is a strong word. And then milestone five, monitor progress and report results. Now, in terms of carbon accounting, that is, is built into year one. Is that correct?
I'm impeccable timing with this question and will be better able to answer it um. In due course, so actually on Thursday, I am attending the CRD climate action um working group meeting. Um, working group meeting to get more information and this is one of the um policies or or tools that they've been working on. So through my attendance um at that committee meeting, I'll be able to receive that sample and then take it back to Mr. Palo to see if it's. Uh, something that we could operationalize or how we might be able to change it to benefit the community to truly work for Suk.
Okay, so manager planning, this position is budgeted and is not uh funds are not being drawn from the local government climate action program.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Um, I was also, I must, I applaud you on your creativity of these best practices of building a climate. It's not creative, it these are the recommended best practices, um build a climate reserve fund for future use. And the creative piece is the community grant, uh expansion, the community grant program for climate action related. Initiatives from local nonprofits. Could you tell me more about that thinking and how the timing would be? Because March fifteenth is the deadline for this year's community grants.
So we needed to get some direction on that and as Ms. Gray spoke to, I mean, there's no shortage of talent in this community. And there's so many um tremendous assets that we really need to lean into and get more information from the community around. I'm like the work of Suk Pucci is not to to single out a particular group, but there, you know, there, that's one example that is some really um tremendous work in the community. Is there a way that we can um learn and build their capacity? Um, to expand the great work that they're doing. So um that would be one example. When we reviewed the climate action plan to see how we could operationalize it for this year. There was numerous items that. Arguably best fit within that community lens, and that's bringing the community together so that we work can work towards this common goal. Uh, that council identified as far as reducing our emissions. That's nothing that the community can do on their own. That's nothing that we can do on our own and nothing that the CRD does independently in provincial government or the federal government. So it's really about how do we harness all the resources that we have? And the case is Suk, we're truly blessed to have. Uh, a wealth of resources through our community. So to answer your your question. Pending this discussion today, uh staff would have to come back to council with with that program. And those specific details and timeline rollout, whether it's piggybacked off. On the existing timelines of the grant, if that's something we can mobilize. Or if um we need to do a greater call for interest to reduce the admissions, and I would likely lean towards the latter. Uh, just so we respect the time that's involved for the community groups and to putting their plan together and to have more of those conversations. So. Just uh at at this point, staff are saying we want to continue that conversation with the community. Uh, what do you guys think about it?
And just to to add on to that, just as far as the timing goes, realistically, yeah, March fifteenth. It would be too early to try and initiate a whole new grant program for that. What I envision probably happening this year is if these. If the rollout of these initiatives are supported by council, then we would do like a one-off intake prop later this year potentially with that grant stream and then. With the goal of then rolling it into the regular community grant process, just to to have a bit more time and communication messaging. We would need, you know, obviously time to confirm what would be eligible, lean on other municipalities as well that are doing something like this creative as a way to fund. Um, provide some funding out to the community and and take some lessons learned from them and incorporate that into our program. So it would be something probably later on this year, we do a special intake, I would envision and then roll it in.
So final point for me, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year from the province guaranteed for three years and we need to pony up twenty-seven thousand dollars to kickstart this funding.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, over to Counselor Betos.
Sure, I certainly hope the counselor math would go first, but she's quiet, so I I will start it. I I have a number of questions. Um. First of all, I know the staff has put a great deal of effort in this and I certainly do appreciate to the chair, sorry. Um, the the first thing is, I remember last year, uh, we agreed. Uh, and it was our CEO McKinnis that made the recommendation that the uh climate action uh coordinator type. Position would be shared with the economic development person was going to take on those two roles. Did did I hear that right? That's that was the description at the time. And now I understand that we're going to have our manage manager of planning. Uh, take on some of that role is is it point five, meaning half that person's time is devoted to that?
Um, to your worship, uh to confirm that that was the attempt at the time, I believe we posted the act dev position a couple of times, didn't find. The right candidate that had the perfect combination of skillset we were looking for. Um, so the current. Um, Ms. Scott, who is our current Economic Development Officer, um with her portfolio, she didn't have that skillset in the climate action, which is why then staff took that opportunity to pivot. And and kind of. Operationalize what actually needed to be done here, which is why then staff made determination that these. Functions could be supported by the manager planning that was sitting vacant as well that we knew was a needed resource. So. Um, with economic development, we didn't want to slow down, obviously, the economic development hiring. I again, maybe they can speak clearer to this than than my understanding. Um, was when we had found our ideal candidate in Ms. Scott, we didn't want to hold that up because she didn't have that climate piece. Obviously, the climate piece is so important, which is why then we reprioritized and um. With the proposal in front of you today is that the manager of planning would be tasked with. The overall. Climate piece. Hence, though, every department will be feeding into this, the reporting that would happen would most likely flow through the finance departments, for for example, and. We're all kind of one big happy family when it comes to.
That's a bit confusing for me, but I believe our our acting CEO.
I I got that, Mr. Schaefer, please.
And I think it's it's simply a matter of your worship of of trying to match the um skillsets with the available. The skillsets that's required with the um direction of council. So uh while Ms. Scott doesn't necessarily have the um. The background particularly in in climate action, what she does have is a really good understanding of the direction that council set. So um it's clearly within her um. Within her understanding of what she's expected to accomplish, that climate. Friendly economic development is ideal. Um, as opposed to just uh development for development sake, um something that serves the purpose of the community. So I I, you know, we've um matched that, I hopefully. Um, with the portion of her time that she spends considering those items with. The uh same amount of energy that the uh manager planning is. It will be expected to accomplish as well.
Anything else?
Oh, yes. Uh, the the next question, and if if I go on too long, feel free to stop me and go to other counselors and then come back to me and I'm okay with that. Uh, this is through our Chief Financial Officer there. Uh, the the CRD has a climate action coordinator and I believe your budget's one point three million. Um, you, I I know it comes off a different thing. It does come off our taxes, comes to CRD taxes on this on our citizens. Do you know what that works out to one point three million? Uh, wh- what's the impact on our homeowners here in Suk? That that's a fairly big budget.
Um, to your worship, I I don't know the answer today to that question. I can CRD, I believe there's a meeting. I want to say next week or the week after um with with the CFOs that that pay into the CRD, so I'll probably have some more information. And I can ask that specific question at that time and then provide that with the March um budget updates. Um, to council, sorry, I don't know that today.
Okay, thank you for looking into that. Uh, the other concern I have is on uh these aspiring goals on page two thirty. Uh, there's a couple here that are really setting an alarm bell off for me. And I need some clarity as as to what they mean and when and if they are going to be implemented. And that is in the middle of the page, all new heating and hot water systems generate zero emissions by two thousand and twenty-four, which is next year. And no new new residential or commercial natural gas connections are made after two two thousand and twenty-four. Um, those scare me. Uh, I lived on this uh in Suk for thirty-three years and on the coast most of my life. And uh with the winds and the power outages, I would be really reluctant to have one source of heat. Uh, in my home. Uh, I my wife and I are looking into building a new home in a couple of years. And uh I know for us and my my health needs, my wife's health need, I would want an ultimate source of gas propane. Or wood, it wouldn't be my last choice. Uh, so when we start eliminating these things by two thousand and twenty-four. I know these are aspiring goals and I don't know, my question is. How inspiring are they in direction to our planning department? When it comes to this, are we banning uh natural gas hookups in two thousand and twenty-four? And uh all new hot water system generates zero emissions by two thousand and twenty-four. That's next year. So that is a question. I'll I'll wait for an answer on that one.
Ms. Mo. Thanks for that question. So um. I think to that to that point where we need to find solutions that work for Suk. So in the the development of the two thousand and thirty plan, it it's aspirational that. Excerpt that's included in twenty on page twenty-two hundred and thirty of the plan is to reach the emission reduction goals. These are some specific metrics that would be required. You'll note that in the two thousand and twenty-three implementation plan, none of those action items are being brought forward by staff. Um, we're not recommending that for. Work and do course at this stage, we've got. Um, a list of action items. There's thirty action items that we've identified that we believe are achievable, that would set the team and the community up for success. I think um and the intent of adopting the plan in principle is that. Through the budget process, we'd come back to have this conversation each year with resourcing so that staff aren't. Going forward in a direction that is not endorsed by council. So there's that uh schedule again is those thirty items staff are saying today. These are items that we see as a positive opportunity to move forward in the community. Um, not the other items unless we receive different direction and that's part of the feedback that we're open to receiving from from council. So if there is uh guidance that you'd like to provide us, you know, and prioritize some of those other items, I'm not hearing that. That's what you're saying. Um, but this is a point for us to have that conversation and outline. These are the service levels. This is the scope of service. Uh, that staff see moving forward within the area of climate action. Yay or nay, for for lack of better words. So we're not steering down that path. So uh sorry if that seemed alarming, was not meant to be. Um, it was capturing uh some of the. Uh, quantifying some of the the goals to reach our two thousand and thirty, to reach councils fifty percent reduction by two thousand and thirty. That's, those are some of the real numbers of the difficult work that we have before us. Um. However, at this stage in the implementation of the plan. Staff are not suggesting that those are the immediate next steps.
Yeah, okay. Um, I I guess it really bothers me that they're even in there to be considered. Uh, would would our planning department be considering something like that in the future? Without direction or?
No, those are items that would have to go through a complete buyout process, so we'd want to be seeking direction before we bring that forward. The only other alternative that. We come before council for consideration if there was other further legislation coming forward from the province where we would need to inform council. Um, which I'm sure most municipalities would be getting updates. Um, from their CAOs discussing these provincial changes, but there's nothing right now on the books that we would bring this forward without proper direction from council.
Thank you very much. That's the answer that I was hoping to hear, so I appreciate that. Um, other than that, I'll turn it over to other counselors. Thank you.
Great, thank you, counselor. Um, other questions, Counselor McMuff.
When you're forming a committee. The one thing that I feel like is missing. Um, and unfortunately, what ends up happening is there's resentment that's created regardless of what your perspective is and when we don't give. Like a fiscal. Line, then what happens is we sort of get this huge, which is what we have now, this massive wish list. And then we hit budget and then we hit, oh, we can't do any of these things. So for the people that put their personal time, education. And knowledge and so many hours into that plus staff time and the money that goes into that as well. Only to get to the budget, just to have everything. Get axed off the list, you are, you are frustrating. The people that put their time and then just like Counselor Betos was mentioning, when you have these maybes. It starts ringing alarm bells for other people in the community who have different perspectives because they're looking at, although they would love to be. At step code five, they can't afford it. And so one of the pieces um. Is the dollar value that's going to. Come through this. So I, when I go through the climate action plan. There are the silhouettes meant to reflect the staffing that's required and then there are the dollar symbols. That are meant to reflect. The fiscal. I don't understand why there isn't just a dollar amount attached to each of those items. I don't know why I have to calculate. And pull out those pieces myself and then run the estimate myself. So when I do. I come out to three point three essentially million dollars. For the climate action plan. And then when I look at their requests and the recommendation from this report, I see. Anywhere from one hundred and fourteen to one hundred and thirty-two up to. Twenty twenty-six, so say it's a half a million dollars. So where is the other three million dollars coming from? Like these, these things aren't clear to me and there isn't a price breakdown for action. Where we could go through this list and say. With our. All the things we have to balance in our budget, here are the things that we can do. Right now, it's just a huge wish list with no. Triage of what's more pressing, is it step code five or is it housing affordability? Because that will go to the people that purchase those homes. And I do want Suk to do things and I understand that Suk is a, in the whole scheme of the world, is a small contributor, but we should still be doing those pieces. And the other one I wish was highlighted more. And I understand that the person that was hired as the Economic Development Officer doesn't have climate action experience, however. The number one contribution factor for Suk is the vehicles on the road. So I don't see that as a big enough piece that's woven into this climate action plan. And the last thing. I have a question, is the OCP public hearing portion closed?
Uh, no, well, the OC, well, I'll start with the OCP and I'll let staff answer the others. Uh, the OCP closed, however, we didn't do third reading.
But the public hearing is closed.
Yeah, we closed it that evening. And so there's a time limit in terms of. If council, let's say next week, resolved to just pursue third reading. I would recommend against that because there's been an election and a lot of discussion about the document since then. Uh, we would need to put it uh put forward another public hearing at a minimum if there was no changes made to that document in its current stage. But I'll have Mr. Palo answer fully.
So the challenge that I have right now is because we are in limbo with this OCP. And the next steps in terms of this climate action plan. Are OCP action items as well. So from a procedural perspective, I don't understand. I don't see how we can approve this right now until we finalize the OCP.
Well, the climate action plan that was committed uh finished by the committee and I'll have Mr. Palo chime in on this uh was endorsed in principle at the time and forwarded here. Uh, the official community plan is a separate document and then we learned at our last regular meeting from our CAO that we are receiving a report. Fairly soon from planning on what we're going to do with that document going forward. But Mr. Palo, perhaps you can comment further.
Certainly, so there there's. Three plans, two positions that kind of been discussed over the last few minutes here. So with our Community Economic Development Officer. Um, that position still takes uh on a climate action component, uh as the report had mentioned, each department is taking on those responsibilities. But as we know as well, when that position was first. Uh, hired with our our first Community Economic Development Officer, we didn't have a climate action plan. We didn't have a uh Community Economic Development Strategy. Now that we have both of those, that's quite a large list of implementation items. That the district is going to have to go through with those two plans. So right now with the workload that we've seen and the resources that are available, we're putting uh a very strong. Uh, effort forward to implement the community uh Economic Development Strategy still with that low carbon resilience lens. And also being mindful that we want to tie in the uh climate action plan as well. Now that that's been developed. So moving forward, that's the manager of planning uh position uh proposal to make sure that we still have the necessary resources moving forward to continue on with the climate action plan. With the official community plan. It hasn't been adopted yet. My recommendation is always going to be that we host another uh. Public hearing because a lot of information has been shared and it's best so that there's no concerns about information that has been heard that we can open it up. Council can receive all of that information, close that hearing and then make a decision regarding next steps. That report I'm planning to bring forward to council in uh uh March next month, next couple of weeks. Uh, so that we can have that discussion as part of a committee of the whole meeting. And then uh discuss next steps uh moving forward there. So. All of those plans, how they're working, how we're allocating resources, that's that's been the proposal that's been put forward with this report for discussion. And then any other changes, how we're going to all action it, that that's all part of our work plans and having that uh ultimately. Um, strategic plan giving us those directions for each year over year with our work plans about what items are attainable.
Procedurally. Does this not qualify as new information?
New information, we have a climate action plan that staff has put forward a proposal on how we're going to implement it. Moving forward with the official committee plan. If the intent is for council to proceed with third reading, the recommendation is that we. If the intent is for council to proceed with third reading, the recommendation is that we first have uh, a public hearing to receive any new information that people would like to share. If we don't move forward with the official committee plan, then the, there, there's no other conversations about uh, new information, that, that bylaw will cease at that point.
Sorry, so to me, we have to have a discussion about how we decide to move forward with the O C P. That's one piece. The second piece is, right now, are we not receiving what would qualify as new information? In directing the O C P, because like there's so, so many of the policies woven into this plan come out in the O C P. So to me, it like this is like kind of qualifying as like new information and where we were at because that meeting's closed. I, I appreciate what you're saying, I just like procedurally to me, this is.
I, I see it as two entirely different things, Ms. Machada.
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, I'm thinking that it might be a good idea for council to perhaps on Monday uh, consider a resolution to direct staff to uh, hold a second public hearing for the official community plan at a date to be determined, which would then allow council to receive information about the O C P.
Okay, that, that's fine. Uh, my only thing though is that what if that's I have a thought that's tangled in my head because there has been some thought that some of the pieces in that draft should be removed and put into a different policy altogether. And leave and have the land, um, the O C P more focused on its legislative requirements, so that it's a document that is a document of ten years, whereas other pieces can come out and should fit into more evolving documents that don't have such a long shelf life. I, I don't know, I don't know where council sits on this, so. It's just an observation, Mr. Schaefer.
Your worship, in, in my experience, there isn't much that happens in a municipality that couldn't be deemed to be part of discussions about a future O C P. I mean, pretty much everything we do is wrapped into a particular process, but this is, it sounds to me like a process question. Uh, this process is, is to do with what we're going to do or if we're going to enter into the discussion about um, putting in our twenty-seven thousand dollars for uh, for the O C P or for the uh, that got me confused now, uh, for the climate action plan, so that we can access that for another hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And the official community plan is a process that is a separate legislative process that's provided for specifically in the local government act. So I, I would tend to agree with Mr. Paulo and, and Mayor Tate that there, there are two different things that could potentially inter, interact, but the legislative processes are, are separate. So if council considered that this was important enough to the O C P discussions to be included in that, then certainly we could include more of this in the O C P discussions and put it forward as a as a discussion point in the, in the O C P process. But this is this and the O C P is, is this thing over here.
But to me, like, to me, it's not because the climate action plan recommendations have such a significant impact on what's being proposed in the O C P. And then the other piece that I'm still stuck on as well is what is the actual financial cost going to be for the implementation of this plan?
And your worship, I think this is, this is, when I look at the numbers that are presented, I think uh, twenty-four thousand dollars are identified for the work that we're going to do this year. In, in the um, uh, appendices to the report that was written, um, there are twenty-four thousand dollars that we'll put in and there's another forty and twenty that are, are coming from different areas. I'm just going to call that back up. But so there's no indication that we're going to try to accomplish the entire climate action plan this year. And over a period of time, I mean, there are seven years between now and, and twenty thirty to work on all the other aspects of it that we're not talking about today.
Sorry, so we, we would put in twenty-seven grand?
Correct.
Okay, and then we would get the rest of the funding for this year?
Correct.
Okay, and then for the next, for the following three years, are we going to contribute twenty-seven each year? Or that twenty-seven gives us the next three years?
That'll depend on council's priorities on what we decide to do.
So the way that the legend is written in the climate action plan, can you explain to me why the cost is so different?
Um, to your worship, so yeah, getting back to the climate action plan specific report, not the attachment, the implementation plan for twenty twenty-three. Um, I think, I'm assuming you're referring to the legends like in the how, you know, starting on page sixty-five, how we move. Um, you know, how we like, and where they have the dollar signs and, and the human resource icons. I think something that's getting lost in translation here is all of this money isn't necessarily district money that we need to spend to achieve these initiatives. As you'll see in the collaborators, like if we're working with B C Transit or the province or C R D, et cetera, like depending on what some of these initiatives are, once they become, you know, a current year action item for district staff, we will be working with our counterparts, you know, as a listed as a collaborator for some of these initiatives to confirm, is this all district funded or is, can we leverage other C R D funding, other grant funding? Is this something that, you know, B C Transit has funding for? Uh, you know, obviously leveraging on these larger organizations and municipalities that have deeper pockets than the district does to, to offset some of these. And then similar to the human, so like, I guess that's like, these dollar signs are there, it's just a very high level guesstimate at this stage, because until we actually implement these things, we don't know how much they would cost for sure.
So this is the challenge that I'm having right now because so if you use that legend, it's, it's three and a half million dollars. But then they're like, I just, I'm really looking for what is going to be the tax increase impact, should we support this plan? And I appreciate we have, we could reach out to other people and we can, we can partner with other stakeholders, but it's, again, we're like greenlighting a plan that there's no price tag attached to, and I find that really challenging. And I hate for, you know, this plan looks great and it's all these like incredible ideas, but hey, guess what? We can't afford to do any of it. And then there's no accounting for like the task, excuse me, the staff time that goes into partnering with those shareholders and, and getting that grant funding or not getting that grant funding. So I'm just really trying to find there's a wishlist, but what are, what are we actually doing and what is the actual cost?
Um, so to your worship and tying on to the human resources piece, like those icons for people are not net new people necessarily to the district. It's to your point, if we were going to achieve, you know, do some of the how we move initiatives that potentially could be some of council's time to advocate and be on certain committees, whether these organizations have, this could be other staff time being redirected in that year for their work plan priorities for that year.
But that's the problem with this report is I have no idea what that means. And I'm not, sorry, I don't, you're, you are just my answer person. But um, I, it doesn't, there's, it doesn't mean anything. So I don't know how to use this legend to try to understand what the financial implications are because it could mean we hire a new staff person, it could mean council does, I just really looking for something concrete.
Which is then why for each year, what staff are doing is the climate action plan, similar to the transportation master plan, all these other master plans. They have massive dollar impacts, we can't do all these roads in five years, like it, it's just not going to happen. So every year as part of the budget cycle, we present to council options of like, this is, these are the projects that staff feel like for various reasons, grants dependent, whatever, are our priorities in that year. So that's what's presented to council for consideration to fund in any given year. So for twenty twenty-three, it's the implementation schedule on the pages two thirty-five to two thirty-nine or what staff are proposing, um, they, we work towards and add into our work plans for twenty twenty-three to help achieve some of those items in the overall climate action plan.
The difference between this plan and those plans, however, is those have hard numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And this. I think Ms. Mogan, then um, Counselor Bateman has an answer as well.
I'm sorry, I was just making sure I'm understanding, so the, to your point that those have hard numbers. I think if we were to reference, and this is maybe for a point of clarity for me, um, other master plans that do have those numbers in them, such as the, the T, um, the T M P, where those are revisited annually or, or at bid, where there's an updated cost analysis on those regardless. Um, so sorry, I am confused. Um, the intent is the listing where they have the costs. So that's what staff are looking for direction on today. But what I'm hearing is a separate conversation specific to the plan as a whole, is that correct?
To me, it's three pieces, it's procedurally where this falls with the O C P and we can discuss that at another time. The second piece is how, what is the actual financial impact of approving this plan the way that it stands? Cause I don't understand the numbers. And so the symbols that are used, the, there's, there's nothing concrete there. And then the other perhaps pieces to, when we're forming groups like these and we're putting plans together, there obviously needs to be some discussion about the parameters in those groups. So people aren't disappointed because we have this beautiful plan and then turns out we can't afford to do ninety percent of it. And so how are we better using that, those people's times and their knowledge and, and hitting some actual targets that we, we can see like you have this, we have this wishlist here. But we also, because there's no price tags attached to these pieces and there's no implications, clear implications on the staffing and the cost of that as well. How do we successfully triage what's on this wishlist?
So, um, through your worship, so that was the intent of coming forward today with the list of thirty items that are costed out and to, to go about that each year where we can. So in this case, they're all, they all have a one-year horizon on those action items. So that was the intent um, of this conversation. It sounds like there's some more work that staff need to do on the other end of the plan as a whole. Um, but for the next steps, specific to the work associated with um, the climate action plan, staff have identified the list of thirty items, the costs associated with it that we could achieve in twenty twenty-three at a, um, with a investment of twenty-seven thousand dollars from the district to uh, leverage the funds available from the province for a total budget of approximately one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars um, for those items. So I thank you for repeating back to me those three different compartments, because we're definitely interchanging all those conversations. Um, so that's one element, which was the intent of this, this report. Um, but what I'm hearing and um, perhaps Ms. Gray or, or Mr. Schaefer might be able to, to speak to this a bit more as far as the next step specific to the SUC twenty thirty plan as a whole and the dollars or what that might look like. Um, to tease out some of those pieces.
I see that as another meeting in a later date. I don't see that as a discussion for tonight on the whole of how we're implementing the twenty thirty plan. I get that it's in here, but there's the list of the recommendations and also what is doable for twenty twenty-three. So I've only focused on twenty tweet, twenty twenty-three specifically, knowing that we have a budget and we have more engagement and other priorities that we need to set throughout this term in terms of what we're going to do. I don't see this plan greenlighting this for the next ten years, just like the others, um, even though we gave in principle to the other two reports tonight, circumstances change. And every year, council has to revisit his budget and say, okay, this is what we thought was going to happen. This happened, now we have to do this instead. No budget always ends up exactly being the same in the next year because things happen in our control and out of our control and we need to examine that accordingly.
I wonder if they just redo their recommendation here.
Well, I think we could do that, um. There, there's no recommendation on the floor, period. So that is what council can determine, I'm just mindful of the time and the public likely also wants to comment. Yes, I will, but I also am the chair and I can overrule anyone at any single time. So it's the case where I'll turn to you in a minute, Counselor Bateman, and then I'd like to turn to the public on this. But in terms of just to clarify, we've been, we've been moving ahead with the transportation master plan. When the advice came, we should do the O C P first, but due to concerns of the community, we advanced that plan, parks and trails. Now we're doing the O C P and they're all tied into each other at the same time as well and have a lot of dollar figures in it. Are we doing it all this year? No, it's what we can do and what we can afford to do. So I'll go to Counselor Bateman and then I guess your hand is up too. And then I'm going to go to the public and then I'll revisit this because it's, I'm mindful of the time and we have a lot of people waiting on this, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I agree with Counselor Bettos that we can reword this motion.
There's no motion on the floor, so you put for what you like.
Okay, so I'll, as a comment, I'll note that when the time comes, I will recommend that we proceed with the year one implementation of the SUC twenty thirty. Agree. Climate action plan. Um, procedurally to, to Counselor Math, and thank you for, for really taking due care with this important document. Um, procedurally, we are working under the current O C P, which remains in effect until the new one is implemented. And that is very much asking the district of SUC to proceed with bold climate action. Uh, bold climate action. Um, the, in terms of the, the icons and cost figures within the document, that was added, quote, uh, meant to be an estimate to provide context for work planning and budgeting purposes, not a firm requirement. I think the key point um, in, in that costing is that the, the two big ticket items in the, uh, in the climate action plan with four dollar signs, which is over a million, relate to the uh, funding and implementation of major parks and trails and transportation master plan. So Charter's Road, for example, a complete street in the planning, that's, that's where the funding is going. So it is, it, it's important to note that um, the, the remainder of the categories, there are twenty-one categories for departmental action in this plan. Nineteen of these categories qualify as low budget. And we're seeing in this um, recommendation for year one implementation, those low items, right? We're not seeing any big ticket items and it, it is designed to be a living document. I think, um, you know, there, there's three or four former members of the climate action committee in the room here and they, they did, I, I believe there's support from the community, from that segment of the community for this plan. We've endorsed it in principle here today, we're, we're receiving very clear tangible uh, first steps, u- utilizing a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in local government program money with the, with the requirement from this council to, okay, set twenty-seven thousand dollars to ensure that we get that funding. Without that, um, without that uh, component, we're, we're not going to get the money. So yeah, that, that's all I've got to say right now.
Counselor Legendess, and then to the public?
So, so for, for twenty-seven thousand dollars, we get a hundred and sixty-two. Yes, but total a hundred and sixty-two. So is, is that a one-time thing? Is that just for this year or is that continuing? So that goes for three years, okay? Just, yeah, so I would be okay with, with twenty-seven K, um, but we haven't even completed our strat plan for this term. And I think there are a lot of, a lot of other things that we need to be thinking about um, that are going to have an effect on the budget. And one of them is uh, transportation and traffic. Like what is the environmental impact of having thousands of cars idling on SUC road for hours every, every afternoon? I think um, we can do more to mitigate um, climate uh, by creating some, some uh, alternate routes through, through SUC and getting the through road connection done. That are going to cost money. And so if, if we look at this hundred and sixty-two K for three years, if we pick out some, some of the key issues in here and budget them out or cost them out to figure out what we can get for that hundred and sixty-two K, I think. But that's a whole other discussion, it's going to take some time and some staff time. We'll use up the money just, just uh, working out what the budget's going to be.
Yeah, that'll come with strategic planning and the like. Great, I'd like to open it up to members of the public.
Alan Dolan, SUC, thank you for this opportunity. Um, well, it's as clear as mud, but it covers the ground. Um, you know, I have some very basic things to say because my understanding of the staff report was a certain kind of understanding and some of that seems to have gotten
seems to have gotten kind of thrown, well, thrown under the bus at least. I don't know if that's the best expression, but um, the Climate Action Committee ran for two years and it was a very incredible dedicated professional group of volunteers who who came up with some recommendations about a, a climate action plan and came up with a recommendation for there to be a climate action coordinator. And so the proposal and the recommendation was to have a climate action coordinator. And I don't see that in this plan. I, I see a manager planning. Um, I just don't think that council should ignore that recommendation of the Climate Action Committee. The other thing is the money, um, the local government climate action program, L G cap of a hundred and thirty-five thousand a year is earmarked for climate action, not planning. And uh, and it makes it very, very clear on their website. Um, they say that it has to be funding for treaty nations or, or local governments uh, to, to basically to reduce emissions and prepare communities for the impacts of climate change. Um, in fact, the, the program's eligibility requirements state a completed and signed attestation form to confirm all funds were or will be used towards climate action. So the way I read the staff report seems to suggest to me that the manager planning is not going to be doing a hundred percent climate action. And I think that's problematic. It kind of seems like we're hiring a planning manager and using climate change money to do that because the planning manager position has been around for a number of years. Uh, and the previous job descriptions and obviously it's been clear that we need to see a new job description for this so-called planning manager. Because the previous job descriptions didn't really include climate. And, and in particular, in this new job description, does it have, have an allocation of time? Uh, and what, how much of their time would be spent on climate? How much, how would their, how their time would be allocated? So I don't know how you could make this decision without that job description. Um, the implementation schedule for climate action is, um, I see staff who are already juggling their twelve-sided desks being asked to do even more. And uh, and, and I seems to me that's why we're having a dedicated staff person to be the climate action coordinator. Clearly that everybody would do something. Clearly it would be a district-wide thing, but there is a need for a dedicated staff person to run the, run the ship. And I feel the implementation schedule at the mi- at the moment is kind of lacking in detail. It's kind of got one level, but it's not going down in, any deeper. And clearly from a financial point of view, that's causing concern. And clearly each of those details would need to be run by this council or groups of those details would need to be. But um, I, I, I just sort of think that there's going to need to be, one of the first things that the Climate Action Coordinator would need to do would be to um, to make that implementation, implementation plan more detailed. So um, you know, and we, and we're, we're relying here on what was called the seven percent solution. It's, it's kind of quickly turning into a nine or a ten percent solution as the years slip by. Um, so I, and I guess, I guess this may be in response to Counselor McMath. I think the job and, and the, the words triage were used. I think the job of council is to triage the numbers. I mean, you're, I think you're constantly doing that. So I don't think the numbers that are assigned in, in the action plan or at least in the top priority items is, is an issue. Uh, so much money is going to get a lot of this year and that's the decision you're being asked to make. And, and, and council's going to do what it can do towards those first priorities. But uh, I, I, I think that council spends its life triaging those kinds of numbers. So I, I, I don't see that as an issue. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Next speaker, please.
Ellen Lurz. I think the priorities are all wrong. We shouldn't be looking at this in the first place. We've got a, we've got a situation where people are on the streets, living on the streets. Um, cannot, don't have a place to live, number one. And what would, and uh, and, and this this plan is asking, asking for like a step seven for net zero. Who's going to be able to afford this? People now, their interest rates have gone up. If anybody are you on, on variable mortgages can go up anywhere to a thousand dollars or more a month. We can't do anything more to people. We just cannot. We can't afford this. We've got to change our focus. Our focus has got to be in getting people housed now. There's, there's a lot of people that don't have homes and the cost of this, it's asking for retrofitting uh, present homes, uh, new homes. A net zero, we're putting, do you know what that means? And it means no natural gas. It means no propane, as Council Meadows, Beto said. I mean, the power was out. A lot of people had nothing, had no heat. More people will have no heat if we get rid of this and heat pumps. Heat pumps are efficient for some homes and not for other homes. And asking uh, commercial properties to put, to put in heat pumps, the cost. This is just way beyond and asking for money uh, for uh, to match up with other governments, it's still our money. It's still our tax dollars. And, and talking about uh, uh, our, our government, our, our own municipal government signing into this. So E Vs, do we have E Vs for all the police cars, E Vs for all, for all the fire trucks? Where are we going with this? I think this is way, way beyond what we can do. It's just too costly. You, um, there, there isn't a number, Counselor McMath, there isn't a number that can be attached to this because it is a wish list. It's way too big for us. I think we really have to just put this in park and get our priorities in straight, straight. I think, I don't believe that we're in a big climate crisis. I think a lot of people are very conscientious of what they're doing on their properties and people are very conscientious about climate. And I don't think we, that we can, that this is going to change anything. This is just more products are going to have to be used. You're going triple pane windows. Where's that glass coming from? Uh, more plastic in the windows. I mean, really everything, more of, of uh, spray foam insulation, insulation, which is carcinogenic. It's not fiberglass. It's not something that we can recycle. There, there's a lot, this is not a very good plan. I, I just, I just would like us to really just put it in, in some, some file in the back and deal with what's really important right now. We have to house our people and, and make sure that traffic is flowing properly. I've been living on that road for forty years and yes, the, the idling. Yeah, my trees grow really great because of all the C O twos that comes in the idling. So my trees are huge. Now I have to have them cut. So, yeah, so it's a, anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lurz. Other speakers?
Uh, William Wallace and I live in downtown Suk. Come on downtown. Uh, I fully support the Climate Action Plan. I think it's done a lot of work by a lot of volunteers that have done an excellent job and your staff. In terms of the next steps, I think I support the overall plan and um, although I have a lot of questions on its implementation, just like all of us did here. What I think we're losing track of is our legal obligation to reduce greenhouse gas emissions that you as a uh, council have committed to and the province is committed to and Canada has committed to. That is the number one goal of staff is to reduce emissions by twenty-eight thousand tons per year by twenty-thirty. Okay, that is the goal. How we get there is up for debate. This a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that the province is giving us, uh, we've talked about it here, twenty, it's only twenty-seven thousand dollars you have to kick in to get that hundred and thirty-five thousand. Your projected budgeting for climate action when the first year is a hundred and fourteen thousand. So you're making money here. Okay, you're actually ahead. Um, if you look in the actions under the, what Suk has done in terms of reducing admissions, we've done very little in terms of getting that number down. Um, I think Ms. Gray pointed out a number of things, a centrifuge, uh, e-bikes. And there was no qualification on the number of greenhouse gases that were reduced because of those things. And I can see little that actually did reduce greenhouse gases except for going to step code C, uh, step code three, five? No, we haven't gone to step code five. We're, we're working on that. Uh, lastly, well, not lastly, if you want to talk about action and getting results, why don't you look at your own house here? Your greenhouse gases for the District of Suk Corp in twenty-twenty-one were a hundred and forty-five tons. In twenty-twenty-two, it's a hundred and fifty-nine tons. So you're going up in your emissions for, for Suk Corp. You know, there's money that could be spent on reducing those emissions. Uh, last year, the budget climate action budget had a hundred and nine thousand dollars awarded to it. You could only find a way of spending sixty-nine thousand dollars of it. I think that's just shameful. If you can't find a way of spending that meager amount of money on reducing greenhouse gases in one year, I don't think you're trying. My suggestion on that, uh, maybe forty thousand dollars could have gone well into planting some nice trees that uh, one of your counselors continually asks. Forty thousand dollars could have gone well towards implementing some alternative energy. A hundred and ten thousand dollars of last year's climate action budget could have put fifty kilowatt system on your roof and reduced your electrical consumption of this building probably by forty to fifty percent a year and prepaid that at a much slower rate than B C hydro. Plus in this example to your community to implement alternative energy. It's me example, it's sitting like there so people see and they might consider putting solar energy on the roofs. The example of maybe taking that money and putting a heat pump on this building instead of using natural gas. A hundred, you've just spent over a million dollars doing renovations on this and the fire hall. And there wasn't any renewable source. You have your seven percent solution that was been spouted for three years now that says we should be retrofitting buildings with heat pumps. Yet your own building here is running on gas. What I'm missing out of the plan in terms of implementation is accountability on greenhouse gas emissions. There's two elements. The C R D is responsible for reporting and in September they will report. And the last two report cards have not been inspirational for, for us. The other a- avenue that's been used is in your budget, you have um, your parks department doing something on emissions for six thousand dollars in your budget. The other is the Partners in Climate Protection, which is a federal, federal uh, Canadian Federation of Municipalities. Uh, that was joined in two thousand and eighteen and nothing was done on, on it until uh, Maya Karasfeld came in and she got through the first two steps. There's three steps to go. And the last step is accountability on admissions of your climate action plan. And you have to submit that plan to get to step three, which this, what we're talking about tonight. So that ball has been dropped in terms of carrying that on. There's over eighty-five municipalities in Canada that have completed all step fives and two of them are on the island here. Okay, so we're way behind the ball, Parker, with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities on climate protection program. And I don't know who's in charge of that or who, I don't see in the, in the plan who's going to take that up. So there's a lot of actions. Uh, in conclusion, I guess, you know, the, the main thing I see is lack of accountability in terms of greenhouse gas accountability in our reductions. And the conclusion of the Climate Action Plan says, ongoing measurement and performance analysis will ensure that any gap and additional requirements are identified and included in future changes of this plan. The other quote is, we also need more field data to successfully realize several how we build action items in the con- action item plan. Primarily through the pro- uh, Partners in Climate Protection Accountability, uh, Accountability of Step Five. So um, my, I, I so fully support the plan. We have to get on with it. They, to, I mean, you had a climate emergency declared in two thousand and eighteen, was it? What are we sitting in? Two thousand and twenty-three now? We have to get off our duffs and actually start reducing with submissions and not start doing the public relations and that is, that everyone knows there's a climate problem unless your head was underneath the rocks for the last five years. We have to start reducing emissions and there's concrete actions that can be done to reduce emissions and not just more public relations, more studies and more money spent. You'd say you had mon- money last year and you didn't even find a way of spending forty, forty thousand dollars more. So thank you very much for your time and uh, I say, I hope you get this thing passed tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wallace. Any other speakers? Are there any other speakers?
Hi, I'm Susan and I live in sunny Sassinos. Um, I'm really happy to see the Climate Action Plan slowly moving towards some kind of implementation. Because we do have a, an emergency, you know, and while it's true that we have a big responsibility to housing people who don't have homes, we equally have a big responsibility to make sure that all of our residents housed and not, don't perish in another heat dome, aren't washed away by another massive flood. Those kinds of things can happen. We talk about the cost. Well, you know, like, talk to the, the mayor of Litton about the cost of not having had um, a lot of uh, m- measures set up to protect them from climate change in Litton. So I think it's an important thing to make sure that we don't want, that we don't uh, be, as my mother used to say, penny wise and pound foolish in uh, choosing not to fund things that are going to make a huge difference in the lives of us, our kids, our grandkids, our great-grandkids and beyond that. I do want to say though, that I'm a little bit concerned about a couple of points in this, in the report. And one was, I was curious about the rationale for choosing not to address four of the twenty-five foundational priority items uh, relating to e-mobility financing, green building rezoning, local food security pilot and internal carbon pricing. I'm wondering, is it possible to ask what the rationale for not pursuing those was?
Or I believe there's an answer. Go ahead, please.
Um, I wouldn't necessarily say no, but not yet. Uh, like I spoke to um, Counsel Bateman earlier. I'm going to my first climate action um, intermunicipal working group on uh, Thursday where there's some of those pieces. There's new information that every day that we're learning and they're sharing. So that should that action item be something to be brought forward, they are better equipped and prepared with um, some work already done that we can evaluate at that, that time. So it's just not within the district immediate. We can leverage the C R D's uh, work that they're doing and that's why it wasn't identified as a district-specific priority. Um, it's just that we have this other opportunity potentially through the C R D on the horizon. So that's why.
Okay, that's, that's useful. One, one of my concerns though is that when you're looking at um, um, creating housing that's low carbon. In order to do that, we might need to have um, the uh, uh, green building rezoning um, in place. And so I'm concerned that by not um, not following through on those in a direct way now, we're going to slow down the implementation. Um, the other question is, it sort of feeds off of the point that Alan made about the uh, planning manager. Um, what are the qualifications? Um, what are the qualifications that are going to be sought? Is this person going to have some expertise in, in climate science?
So given the, the level, uh, of the position being a manager of planning, we want somebody that has extensive experience in both planning as well, as well as environmental, natural and, uh, climate related uh, policy development and implementation. So when we provide for job descriptions and the qualifications, they can come from a array of different educational backgrounds as well as combined with experience. So it's all going to be based on the candidate and, uh, the interview processes. If, if we feel that individual can meet the needs of the district specifically to that position. So I can't say specifically, we're looking for this specific individual with years of experience and these educational backgrounds. It's all going to be based on their resume, resume and, and the standard hiring process that any organization would go through to, to find the right fit.
Okay, well, and, and that's great. And, uh, so I would really hope that, um, climate science, uh, so climate science background is a, is uh, available in whatever candidate you find because I think that while the idea of getting away from the siloed approach and making sure that the whole corporation, the whole district is focused on climate action. I think that's a great goal. Um, I'm not convinced that someone who simply has a planning background will have the depth of knowledge to be able to make some of the connections and policy decisions that are required. However, um, I would rather risk that, you know, you hire the wrong person and, and to do the job than just decide not to do the job at all. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Belford. Are there any other speakers today?
Thank you. Nick Dixon-Wold, ISUQ. Uh, fundamentally, I do support the draft plan. I do believe it is very much not bold enough. The years are going by. It's getting harder to reach that twenty thirty goal, not easier. And the bigger steps that we delay get harder every time we delay them. So I would very much encourage more was done, but getting a hundred and thirty thousand for twenty-seven thousand to me is a no. No challenge choice. It's just a little outlay for a big benefit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And could you please turn off the microphone while you're there? Thank you. Okay, so council, I'm just mindful of the time. I have to leave in about seven minutes. Um, I just want to Counselor Betos. We have a question and um, if, is there one, just one more speaker? Okay, um, if you can, please come forward and, and make your comment then. I thought everyone had finished, so. Can approach the microphone, please. Sorry, I have a son that needs to be picked up from childcare. So that's why I might just, um, vacate the chair then. Actually, why don't we do that? Because we still have quorum. So Counselor Bateman, I'm going to need you to share this meeting. I'm down to one vehicle in my house and I have to pick up my son, so. It's the way it goes, right? Still have quorum and I'm sure you'll do a good job.
Sinclair. I'll try and be brief, which is very difficult for me. Um, most of what I wanted to say has already been said. Um, I mean, is this a climate emergency? Uh, Antonio Gutierrez is talking about the sixth great extinction where we're struggling for the survival of humanity. Are the number of centuries we have left may be very limited. And we're experiencing extremely serious problems across the world. Pakistan is covered in water. Um, France, for the first time, has forest fires in, uh, February. And climate change is no fun. On the Rideau Canal, for the first time, they don't have enough ice to skate on. In Europe, the ski resorts are closed because it's very hot and dry in most parts of, of southern and central Europe. So there are really major changes taking place. And in Canada, we're asleep at the switch. We are the only G seven country that still keeps regularly and substantially increasing our emissions. Our country is extremely far behind most other G twenty countries. Um, a person who I've learned to really enjoy listening to recently is a man who teaches at a business school, Wharton Business School, Jeremy Rivkin, who has written twenty books on, on energy transition. And one of the things that he says, and this is open to debate depending upon how you look at the numbers, is that the top three causes of climate change are housing, by far the biggest. Surprisingly, red meat production, uh, consumption and production, which is growing proportionately and transportation. This municipality could have a, an impact on our local, um, greenhouse gases relating to housing and we should be doing that. We should be doing that faster. Um, we also could be doing something about, um, transportation. In Norway, the majority of cars sold every year is electric and they're, they're switching over very quickly to electric. We talked, somebody mentioned earlier, public transportation. In Shenzhen alone in China, there are twelve, twelve thousand electric buses functioning and that number is growing exponentially. Um, we need a climate chief. We, we had an excellent presentation from our fire chief. He responded intelligently, quickly, strategically as to our needs and what to do. We benefited from the same things from our, our staff sergeant, our police chief. Um, we need a climate chief. We need a climate coordinator. I, I don't know who to ask in this room questions because, uh, uh, almost all of the answers have been confusing. Um, and I'm, and I thank you all, particularly our councils for having, having invested as much time as you have in this. And I realize that you all take this seriously and you look at it from very different points of view. Mine might be different than others, but you have done good work and you need to move ahead as Nick said, more quickly and boldly. Um, there, I don't know who to address any questions to. I get the impression that, um, action, a limited number of action items have seriously reduced the vision and, um, implementation of this plan as it stands today. And I think we need someone who can help pull this together. And for me, that would be a full-time, um, climate coordinator. Um, there are a couple of things that I would like to see somebody look at and I know this is not necessarily time for this, but there's a lot of job creation in renewable energy. Um, it wasn't mentioned today that Harbor Side has just converted to solar energy. Um, there are a number of s- small firms in soup that employ an increasing number of people who are helping us move on to solar energy. And, uh, this is something, alternative forms of renewable energy really need to be focused on. So solar panels in parts of Germany. It's compulsory to put a solar plant panel on your roof. That's been the case for ten years. It's not something for the future. These countries are moving ahead and they're moving ahead fast. In, in Europe, I was watching, um, a television news item last night, which explains that many of the swimming pools in Europe have converted to geothermal energy. It's much cheaper. It requires a substantial investment in the first place. But it's a much cheaper way to heat swimming pools and probably your house. And it's something we should be looking into. And, um, second to last thing, we should be, we're in an ideal area to be, um, promoting uh, wind, wind generated energies, wind turbines, whether in, uh, in a larger area, which would require a, a substantial investment, which, uh, uh, Ms. Gray could be promoting from the outside. Or there's, are these new tulip forms of wind turbine turbines which can generate energy and they, they're quite attractive. Actually, my wife was showing me a model the other day for, um, for local areas. And one last thing I would encourage you to do is, um, to look at the Charter House. Many of you have driven by it. It's at the, almost at the corner of Jaclyn Road and West Coast Road. This, this mo- these requirements and models for construction are, uh, spreading like wildfire in China where although it's a very contradictory country. Um, um, passive home certification is a very good model to look at. There's much more I could say. I would like to say, but I would encourage you, as have others, to be bold and to appoint a full-time climate coordinator. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Janelle Kent. Um, I am concerned about climate. We have a legal obligation to be concerned about climate. We need to reduce our admissions. Um, with all respect to staff, I know there is a lot of education that needs to go on and a lot of community opting in that needs to go on. However, neither of those two things are going to substantially reduce your, your greenhouse gas emissions to the point you are legally required to do in the next six years. And I think that that is the crux of the issue. That we have to come up with some actions with some costs, with some calculated benefits in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And we need to put that together to be our plan. Whether we have bike rodeos, whether we have zero waste in composting, that is all important for the environment and all important for the climate. But it does not substantially do the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions that we need legally to do. And I think that that's where we need to start turning our minds. This is like an engineering problem. This isn't like a community development problem. In a community development problem, you are aspirational. You get grassroots movements. You try to move things forward. In an engineering plan, you're building a, a dam or a road and you have actual requirement, scientific engineered requirements that you have to meet. And that is exactly what the greenhouse gas emission reduction requirement is. It's a scientific reduction in greenhouse gases. And SUK with the rate of its development and the fact that it's a commuter community, the fact that it has many old houses and the fact that it has many sprawled subdivisions is all making this greenhouse gas emission reduction issue bigger and more complex. I've heard that some in SUK are thinking, well, we should be given special consideration because we're a fast-growing community, but the world is a fast-growing world. We can't say, okay, well, we're growing and so maybe we don't need to reduce greenhouse gases as much as people say. Well, that doesn't compute because that doesn't meet the engineered scientific need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So we need to approach this as a mathematical financial problem and not as an aspirational nice-to-do problem. We need to actually get to work, roll up our sleeves, figure out what specifically we need to do that reduces this amount of greenhouse gases. We need to check in every year. We said we'd get five hundred new vehicles this year that are EV or hybrid. Did we do that? Yes or no? And if so, what is the gap we're bringing forward into the next year's cycle? And we need to do this kind of accounting because there's no other way to do it. We can't just say, well, we hope we're doing it and we really would like to do it. And we think it's important for the children to do it. We need to actually start doing it for all of those reasons. Because it's legally required, because there's people who are not sitting in the lap of luxury as we are, who are dying by the millions already because of climate change. We need to think of those things, not whether we want to have more of the very nice things that we already have. So I think we need to turn our more mathematical minds to this and less of our creative development minds. We need to actually get, treat this as an engineering problem and get cold hard facts for costs, for what our actions will say they do. And then we need to check, did they actually do that? And if they didn't, then the next year is double down again. Because if we don't meet one year's targets, that just rolls over to the next year. It's not like we say, oh darn, we didn't do it, but we'll get the next seven percent. No, if we don't do five percent in twenty-three, then we need to do twelve percent in twenty-four. And if we do, don't do eight percent in twenty-four, then we need to do fifteen percent in twenty-five. And soon that will number, will grow enough that we will not be able to afford it by the time twenty twenty-nine comes along. So it's not happy to do things that you can't really see. You can't really touch, which you can't with greenhouse gas emissions. It's not a happy project. But it is a very necessary project, not just for us in SUK, but for our children and for everyone in the world. And that's where I leave it. I mean, I just see here we are confused. We don't know who's on first. Oh, we'll get an economic development. No, that didn't work. We'll get a pro manager planning, we'll get something. But what we really need is we need to get the job done. And think about what are the tools we need to do to do that? And the tools we need are not aspirational. The tools we need are scientific engineering and accountable action at the end of every year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and any further comments from the audience? Going once, twice, three times. Okay. All right, so here we are, comments, and then we can move to a motion by Counselor Betos. Counselor McMath.
I have a question. The funding that we would receive, could we put that towards a climate coordinator salary?
Um, to your worship, I, yes, I believe it can be used for staffing. The issue is, is because it's only three years of staffing. Or sorry, three years of funding required if that funding runs out in three years from the province then, and actually year one has already happened. Um, then we would have to absorb that position into overall property taxes, um, potentially.
That's okay. Thank you. That's fine. For me, that's fine because it sounds like the number on priority is, as much as you have a plan, we don't have anyone that can execute it or finesse it if things don't work. Um, I'll leave it at that. I'll see what Counselor Betos puts up.
Just a quick follow-up on that, if I may. Um, would, would
would it be possible to use the funding for a contract position versus a staff position?
Um, to your worship, I believe so. I I don't have the criteria right in front of me right now. Um, but yeah, I believe the criteria is fairly loose as long as related to climate initiatives. I I think what's maybe getting lost in translation, just a point of clarity, the manager of planning is not funded with this climate money, and this is funded with property tax money, and I'm not sure where that narrative came from, but it is not funded. It's not being proposed to be funded with this hundred thousand plus of climate action money. What is being proposed to be funded with this climate action funding is the implementation schedule for twenty-twenty-three, which has identified eighty-five thousand dollars worth of funding, and then a few to be determined that staff anticipate will be used to to balance out the rest of the funding can go towards some of these initiatives. Obviously, a hundred and thousand dollars isn't going to get you a road built, but it could be a contributor, you know. Once we know what, for sure what these other items cost in the twenty-twenty-three implementation plan, any additional funding left can be allocated um to a a specific roads project or a trail project or some other one of these other initiatives that have a to-be-determined cost in the um list of recommendations included on page two thirty-five to two thirty-nine of the climate report.
Counselor Pearson.
Thank you. To you and and some comments and some um one or two questions at the end. So catching up and and not being part of, you know, the climate action plan is no excuse for me because I live in our community and I'm happy that there is a climate action plan. Um, what became evident to me today, listening and trying to catch up, is is that there's a lot of, a lot of moving pieces, a lot of parts that don't add up to action items. There's a lot of unclarity about what are the priorities. Um, and I think our last speaker, Ms. Kent, said, um, summed it up best for me. You know what? Do something, but base it on science, base it on 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 things that are there. I'm not sure if anybody's familiar with the Pareto graph. You take your, you know, your worst problem, and you work on that one first, and that's eighty percent of your problem. That I think that some of these items in here are 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 deeply complex to me and um to our Director of Planning. Um, there's some, there's a lot of bylaw overview in some of this, these things that haven't been done yet. So thank you, Director of Planning, for for that. But um, I think there's a lot of goodwill in our community. And from our staff, I want to say thanks because uh the presentation from our Director of Finance and was that, you know, a lot of little things can add up. But we have some big-ticket items in our community, and we heard some of that from our, my fellow counselors about, you know, cars idling and things on the road. So we have to, I think we have to make some bold decisions in some of our p- audience, people there, um, and and really put rubber to the ground on some things, because this is kind of a dance. And there's a sense of urgency that's out there that we're not really addressing, and that's, that's, that's incumbent upon us to be uh political leaders and be bold. So um, thank you for all the people that that care public and all our staff that care and all the counselors that care, because I think we've got to now somehow come up with a way to craft what our priorities are, what we can afford to do, but to have it find money somewhere else to to do some of the things that we we would like to do, and and maybe that's go back to the tax law or things like that. But but we need to follow process too, so. Anyways, thank you. That's the comment. I don't have any other questions. I'll be voting to support the climate action plan, not exactly it is yet, but.
Okay, um, I think we could take a motion now and there'll be opportunity to comment.
Yeah, I think it'll, I think it'll offer a little bit of clarity and and I'll motivate after as well, if you don't mind, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, my recommendation is that the Committee of the Whole recommend council direct staff to proceed with the implementation of those items identified in the inflammation schedule that has been presented. So that is very specific for this year for those items that staff has identified are doable. So that is my motion. I don't know if that was captured. I could uh mean, the whole next staff, even if those staff identified as doable, okay. Uh, not quite. It's it's just in the appendix.
Achievable. It's specifically measurable achievement.
Sure, yeah, yeah, sure. I didn't say doable anyways, did I? Ah, it's getting late, I guess. Um, okay, anyways, I'll motivate that. I I I think initially that we're looking at a twenty-seven uh thousand dollar investment in the scheme of what we do in Suke. Uh, that is small potatoes, uh, but it will achieve uh us getting in the right direction. Uh, as for some of those big-ticket items and uh, uh, you know, staff, not staff, but the public related to them. Uh, you know, like the through-road extension, which is in our transportation master plan, which is another funding stream. If that is successful, that will do a great deal to stop those idling cars and probably save us a great deal more in our carbon footprint than some of these other things. So there is a lot of things going on. Uh, the other thing that maybe the public, I'm sure they they are aware, we also have to um balance the budget, and we we can't go to the public with a a thirty percent tax increase. There uh, there'd be pitchforks outside. So um, I I think the way this is and the 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 work that staff has done uh will get us going in that direction. Uh, I really am alarmed at some of these other things in there, but we'll deal with those in time. So that's my motion and uh better go.
Second, first time speaker. No, good. Counselor um McMath.
Um, I I like the the principles of what you're saying. I don't love the motion. Um, to me, it's the number one priority is that the District of Suke hires a climate action coordinator because planning and development is already struggling with their current workload, so I just don't see that being successful. Should they take on an additional role that really considering the amount of work and action items that are listed in the twenty-twenty-three plan, to me, it's not feasible to be successful in that. So if we're going to have a direct impact on Suke's emissions, then that is a full-time spot. So for me, I'm comfortable with the twenty-seven grand that gets us the money for the three years, and that goes towards a climate action coordinator. And then we will start to see that traction and we'll start to get back those measurables. Part of our obligation as counselors is to be able to explain to the taxpayers where their money is going. And so as long as it's justified, then then I'm happy to support it. The challenge that I have with the twenty-twenty-three climate action plan is there's, there's no hard numbers. There is what I've calculated is three point three six, like million dollars. So is that the actual or like, and all I need is to have that explained, and so this action item is going to cost X amount of dollars, and it's going to take this much of staff time. And then we can decide, yeah, you know what, it's a bit of a hit, but in the long term, it's worth it. And so as long as I have that information, then I can support all of those pieces. I just, it it's my duty to know what that is. If I just say, yeah, we we green-lighted it. I don't really know how much it's going to cost, and I don't know how it's going to tax our staff, and you don't have a climate coordinator, so I don't know what's going to happen. That is, we would all be in dereliction of our of our duties as counselors. So I'm not comfortable with the motion the way that it it is worded. Um, so I won't support it because it it just doesn't articulately enough capture those pieces for me.
Thank you for that. Um, uh, through me to you, Ms. Mashada, what it will, will this um motion, if passed as is, come back up through the budgeting process as we, these items will be identified within the five-year budget?
The motion would not, no. This is directing staff to proceed with those items.
With these identified and funded items as listed.
Just to clarify, I can give you what your options are right now, is to either have Counselor McMath suggest an amendment that will satisfy her. You can vote on that and then come back to vote on this one, or you can take a vote on this motion. And if it doesn't pass, then somebody else could try another motion.
Counselor Pearson. Would it satisfy um this Counselor McMath? The Counselor McMath, if it included the uh within the budget of the hundred and sixty-two thousand? Somehow, and I'm asking if we can get that wordsmith in there. Because that's kind of our and I don't know, and I'm, I have to ask the question back to finance. Is that hundred and sixty-seven thousand that, including the hundred and twenty-nine plus, or the twenty-seven plus hundred and thirty-two, whatever it is, um, is that the 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 action items that were achievable this year and recommended, would they fall within that budget?
Uh, yeah, to your worship to answer Counselor Pearson's questions. Yeah, the the costing that we know for sure we're proposing allocated for the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars or hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, sorry, um, sixty-two, too many numbers, is eighty-five thousand dollars. There's eighty-five thousand dollars identified in in the report of known cost. The additional funding would come once we know um about working with um Ministry of Transportation, like some of these other to to be determines, once we go through the budget cycle, then a little bit of money that's left out of that, you know, eighty, just under eighty thousand dollars can be allocated, would be allocated to some of these initiatives. Obviously, it's not even close to enough to fund these initiatives, but it would just be a little bit of an additional funding going towards there. So to that point, instead, if that climate action funding was now used for climate action coordinator, there would be no established funding for any of these initiatives this year, and all of those funds mostly, you know, three quarters of these funds would go towards a climate action coordinator with no funding, base funding available for them to initiate any of these items, if that's where the priorities are.
Be the case if it was a contract uh climate action coordinator?
Either, um, to your worship, like contractors are very expensive as well, usually higher hourly rate than staff. So I would envision that it would be more costly to hire a contractor than hire existing, except for a shorter-term project. I I mean, that is something we could consider, but I again, if there's a hundred, if we're going without, you know, a hundred and sixty-ish thousand dollars available in climate action for twenty-twenty-three specifically, I appreciate all these other recommendations in here can be many moving pieces. There's polarizing while there's people for what's in there and thinking we should do even more. There's a whole other sector that's saying we shouldn't be doing anything with this. It's not our problem to solve. It's, you know, bigger players at the table should be helping us solve this problem. District of Suke can't solve all these problems by ourselves, so that's why I again, we've come up with what can we actually achieve to start moving this plan forward in twenty-twenty-three? That's why those items are presented for council's consideration of where to allocate the funding for in twenty-twenty-three. Should council decide to say, no, I'd rather you use that funding towards higher climate action coordinator? That information can be presented as part of twenty-twenty-three budget um considerations, and just then one of those other items will not be able to be done.
So uh, in terms of that, the job description for the manager of planning, which is rather unimaginative title, it could have been manager of planning and climate strategy to possibly represent the fullness of its mandate, uh, when would we see that? Would that come up prior to budget deliberation?
Um, to your worship, I I don't believe normally job descriptions are sent to council or, I think the job would be posted publicly. In theory, and that's when the job description would be available. I believe it's still under development right now, um, uh, to incorporate those and and just doing research with other municipalities and and just to confirm the whole climate action piece that will not live with this manager of planning. It's again, the finance department will be doing the reporting when they're talking, you know, there's been comments made about reporting. Well, there is a reporting requirement as part of that, so we will absolutely be meeting that requirement.
So basically, our only option as a council here is to follow Counselor McMath's advice and request specifically that a climate action coordinator be um be included in through this uh LG cap funding.
And and your worship, I think um if council, if if Committee of the Whole was to direct staff to bring that back, that obviously goes to council at the next meeting for, you know, as as following the process for Committee of the Whole uh to council. Um, if council was to direct that that position be put into the budget, that would hamstring potentially your further budget discussions because that hundred, hundred and ten, hundred and thirty thousand, whatever the price point would be for that position, that's now taken out of the picture.
Right.
So that would impact potentially firemen's firefighter staffing, uh, other staffing asks. Um, so it it's something to consider, the the directness of that is something to consider. I mean, I don't want council to put itself in a position where you're tied to something that might be in favor now, but might not be a fun for the reflection.
Okay, I have uh speaking order of Counselor Betts and McMath.
Well, I see this got off the rails here, but um I I am not in favor of a climate action coordinator. If we if we spend the money to hire a climate action coordinator and leave nothing for them to coordinate with these rather modest things that were, that are identified by our staff as doable, uh, I'm not sure what that person would do. The other side of that, um, we have uh a climate action coordinator that we pay for in in the CRD with a budget of one point three million dollars. So uh, I think if every little fiefdom in uh the thirteen principalities and municipalities, each got a climate coordinator uh with no budgets, the things that are going to make changes in this carbon footprint, and and I I know there's lots of suggestions here. The big ones are are out of our control. You know, we we don't have the the millions and billions of dollars it's going to take to put uh charging stations across this country, which we're going to desperately need. So we have to look at what we can do that's affordable in Suke to do our part. And I think it was a good compromise today because I don't really like this climate action plan, as you probably could gather, because I I don't think some of those uh goals are realistic, and I like realistic goals. But I think the initial uh recommendation is that we do what we can, uh identified by staff as very achievable is certainly better than doing nothing. If we move to a climate action coordinator with no budget for them to do anything, I think we've just wasted that money. Uh, I I don't think anything can happen. So I'm not in favor of a climate action coordinator at this time.
Okay, so we, oh, Counsel.
So just the flip of that is if you have this gigantic plan that doesn't have like clear timelines, tangibles, or financial impacts. Planning and development is treading water as it is, so it's not going to go anywhere. And having the climate action coordinator also would give that person the opportunity to tackle other grant funding options, so that role could eventually pay for itself. This is clearly not going away. So this position, to me, it makes sense that it be um a permanent hire. Um, Counselor Bateman was touching on having a consultant uh hired, but this, we need someone in the seat to start giving us those answers. And the the best example from the public was that we have a fire chief, we have a staff sergeant. When we have these questions and we're looking for financial implications and measurables, they were able to answer, and we don't have that right now. So I would just, like I hear what you're saying, but to me, it's the absolute opposite. If we don't have someone in the chair, it is a full-time spot tackling those things and getting those answers for us that the current staff doesn't have the time um to do nor the expertise. If, yeah, I just in the complete opposite perspective. So we'll see how this goes for, but for me, like what I would look at recommending is that they can all recommend council approve the funding of the twenty-seven thousand dollars to leverage the one thirty-five in funding through the provincial local government climate action plan funding, and that that funding be used to pay for climate action coordinator. We have already agreed in principle um the twenty-twenty-three climate action plan. So to me, it's like it, this becomes like a bit redundant.
Okay, so I think we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, you can't consider another.
We need to uh address that motion on the floor. Have we any further comment?
Which, which one we have?
Yours.
Yeah. I have a little bit of comment here, but I'm yeah, I'm going to offer this up right now. Um, you know, when I saw this report, um, I was um initially underwhelmed because, you know, I brought forward through the Climate Action Committee, the call for a full-time climate action coordinator. And we had, we were just in the afterglow of Maya Carlesfeld's contributions to the district. They were substantial. And as the motion makes clear, um, they're all there. Uh, there was also no job description for, as I said, this rather underwhelmingly titled manager of planning, when it could be clap, planning and climate strategy. So it's difficult to know for sure that we're going to be getting a point five individual. And at a time when it, the optics of this look like we're, we're, we're addressing development permit delays by ensuring that we have our manager of planning in place. Um, well, I sat with the report all weekend, and I came to change my mind. I think that um we, this Well, I sat with the report all weekend and I came to change my mind. I think that we this point five climate action. Individual under the manager of planning title will be that. Individual to orchestrate a whole of organization strategies. That individual will also keep us on course with the the five milestone program, which very definitely brings the math forward, right? It identifies it's going to account for carbon on a variety of levels that particularly transportation and building energy. The the climate action plan is in fact, I believe, bold for a municipality of our size, wanting to work in partnership. With regional, provincial and federal governments and in importantly with nonprofits in the community through funding streams. Available to them. And finally, at the LGL, LG Local Government Leadership Academy on on Friday. We heard from the Community Energy Association, which is based out of UBC and it recommends best practices for local governments. And we in fact are trailblazing on those items. Low carbon resilience, bring that on as a strategy and I can see some rolling eyes back there. But bringing a local carbon resilience as a whole of organization, co benefit strategy is number one recommendation from this organization. It also recommends staff climate action expertise. Working regionally within the CRD's Climate Action Service. Facilitating and funding grassroots action and building a climate action reserve fund are all things that local governments can do. So I'm in support and I would like to thank staff for coming forward with these items. It's a living document. It's designed for year after year analysis and and rejigging as as required. And as such, I'm I'm in support of Council Bettos' motion. Let's have a vote. All in favor? Opposed?
That the Committee of the Whole recommend council approve the funding of the twenty seven thousand dollars to leverage the one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in funding through the provincial local government climate action plan.
Can you slow down a little bit for?
The one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. In funding. Through the provincial, local. Government. Action program. Am I duplicating myself? That thing, that funding?
Yeah.
And that the funding be used to hire a climate action coordinator. Well, they won't pay them extra. Do you need me to have clarity in there that obviously any excess funds? Go to climate action.
I would think because the funding is directly provided. As climate action funding, that it would go without saying that we would direct that specifically to that purpose.
Thank you.
Okay, and of course, this will come forward to the next council meeting for a full discussion if someone chooses to pull it from the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. That will depend whether or not council chooses to. Rise and report in special, the special meeting, we're immediately following the cow.
Now, if Mayor Tate was here, she'd say no shows of affection and emotion. Okay, so on that note.
Sorry, did you call for those opposed? Sorry. Sorry, did you call for those opposed to the motion?
Those opposed? Yes, Council Bettos is opposed.
Yes, so if council chooses to do the rise and report, we would immediately move into consideration of the motions passed this afternoon.
Item seven is rise and report. And the Committee of the Whole rises and reports that we have made that motion.
I'll just give me one sec. I gotta change.
All those motions, excuse me. So there we are. They're all do it. We don't need to read these into the record again, or shall I?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay. So having risen and reported. We'll call for an adjournment.
Sorry, are you going to pass these motions? You need a mover and a second.
Yes, okay, here we go. So. Well, I think to get it forward to the next agenda, we will need to do that now.
It doesn't come back to the next agenda.
Oh, it doesn't at all.
If you're going to consider this now, it will not come back. We can just adjourn the meeting.
Okay, so we will adjourn the meeting. Leaving these, so just to be clear, these are.
This will come back as a set of recommendations from Committee of the Whole to council at a regular meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. So call for adjournment. Counselor Macmath and seconded by Count, no, no need for a sec.